Are we supposed to be up here?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the ground?
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
Yeah.
He's at that.
Oh, okay, there's Bob. I think he's...
Yeah.
There's the most...
Yeah.
There's the most stressful person in the world.
I don't know.
They have a couple of people...
Yeah.
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 They have a couple of people...
Yeah. Right. How you guys are doing?
So if I understand the process correctly, it comes here and then it goes to the ballot.
We don't have to do it.
Really? Did that change? Cause.
I can take my mask off up there when I'm talking, right? Does anybody have their mask on? I just feel like.
Adam, speech. The speech position was. Was too fit. It was too fit.
Yeah. I think he'll be fine.
Not yet. Um, it looks like. We're not sure yet.
Okay.
Whirling in the bud.
No way.
And paddling and passive because you just had, uh, a handful.
Glad I'm here. We're in the cards.
So, but as of this moment, it's still suspicious.
And so this, this increase here is for the two kids.
Yes, and remember that includes, um, she's like high on the scale.
I do too. Uh, ninety.
It's a lot more. It's a lot higher cost.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't quite realize it because it wasn't budgeted because we thought this prior SLP was coming back.
Yeah.
But that's why it looks like a giant jump from last year.
I don't think anybody would ask.
Never know. I never think I'm gonna get the per capita, uh, cost for special education students, but I calculated, I got it one year, so I've come prepared every year with.
Actually, at some point, we should all chat. I haven't even had to. There's, there's a movement that's, uh, highly, um. Public comment and even if only to residents. As well as. It might change, you know, in variations, but as well as the, um, chair or chair have full control over who can speak and whether or not they can hear public. Yeah. Um, and perhaps, I'm not sure if it would go as far as saying that, but the thing is, we have a lot of students that have families and residents. So their voice would be a challenge.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, uh, at some point, we want to put our heads together. Um, there is a, there's like earrings coming up about a town meeting or something like that. So I'll keep my ear to the cry.
Yeah, yeah, dude.
That's not something that I would feel. I'm not quite sure how to navigate that yet as a parent resident and how to file an administrative.
No, but that's a great point. We ought to, uh, continue us.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if you know that, I haven't had any complaints. Just occurred to me now to mention it, but I think.
There's been a push in on these two managers. Make more. But the ground is, uh, in board meetings, you know, to take care of the blues cannon who come in and destroy things. But, uh, and we've had a good conversation about it in our board. Don't want to sort of assert a big military structure. But, uh, I can see how some others wouldn't agree with that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that needs to be thought out as well as most people. Be careful about.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Participation in terms of, you know, the meeting.
Yeah.
Always, which negatively plays a big role. It's a matter of.
Yeah, which is, which is already limited enough.
Yes, yeah.
Good, yeah, keep it close.
I will. Thank you. Getting used to it. I think you're sure of it. Actually. No, no, they're not. This, uh, apparently up in the side of my panel. I think there's no hope.
There's no hope. Right there with you. Oh, no, there's no hope. You're probably all good.
Right?
Yeah.
Nah. Go quick. I'm trying to think what the, what's the.
If you want, I bought like fifty shirts. They're not the best. They're not the best. Well, great. Also, that's true.
So I grabbed the packet of warrant articles and just had the education articles.
I got, yeah. I thought I, yeah, I thought I picked it up. Here, let me, uh, I don't know if I found it. I gave you. Yes. Yeah, there's one of the. Basically, bring out assembly and awards and read first round more or less is how it's structured. You know, the, uh, the flight rates got completed. A lot of work. To find out how things can be healed. I love the mind that there needs to be second fuel support. I'd like to see a little bit of that first. This is a good decision whether it's, you know, it's, uh, kind of straight. Just because less so, um, particular issue, but more so, um, if it's natural checking balance, it seems like we shouldn't be. Yeah. That's. Right now, all you're, it's, it's, it's the issue of that. Right. Okay, I don't, I, I don't want to, I don't want to. That's what I'm asking. The reason, the other purpose of the board is to give a secondary.
Okay, once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The superintendent tells me I can take my mask off to talk, so. There are no students to infect and I'm fully vaccinated. Welcome to the, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, sort of annual town meeting for the town of Lemoine. Before we actually get started, we have a couple of, uh, things to do. And the first one is to award the conservation award for twenty twenty-one. And with that, I will, uh, turn it over to, uh, conservation commission chair, Larissa Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. The Lemoine Conservation Commission is pleased to present the twenty twenty-one conservation award jointly to Catherine Dzinski and Judith Whitcomb for their significant gift to the town of publicly accessible open space and their efforts to protect important natural resources on the Whitcomb Woods property constituting a major expansion of Bloomfield Park at Blunt's Pond. Over the past several years, Kathy and Judy worked with Frenchman Bay Conservancy to apply a conservation easement to forty-one point five acres of budding Blunt's Pond in Bloomfield Park, and then in twenty twenty, donated the land to the town of Lemoine. The Blunt's Pond property, now known as Whitcomb Woods, had belonged to Dr. Clarence Emery and his wife Charlotte in the first half of the twentieth century. At that time, the property was rich farmland and had for many years been the scene of commercial ice harvesting with thousands of tons of ice cut from Blunt's Pond and sluiced down to awaiting ships in Berry Cove. Two years after Dr. Emery's death, the Blunt's Pond property was purchased in nineteen fifty-nine by Kathy and Judy's father, Dr. Benjamin Whitcomb. Dr. Whitcomb was born and raised in Ellsworth, and his connection to Lemoine began in the late nineteen twenties when he dismantled the carriage house from his parents' home at the corner of High and Main Streets, the current Rossborough Building in Ellsworth, and had it rebuilt as a cottage near Lemoine Beach. Although he practiced as a neurosurgeon in Hartford, Connecticut, Dr. Whitcomb and his family summered in Lemoine for decades, sailing up every August. Kathy and Judy have many fond memories of their summers in Lemoine, buying warm homemade donuts from Mrs. Young, digging clams, and collecting driftwood for lobster boils on the shore, family sings, midnight sales, and the stories their great uncle Hal told by the fireplace. All these years later, with Kathy living in Colorado and Judy living in Alaska, both cherish their Lemoine roots. Dr. Whitcomb purchased the Blunt's Pond property with a mind for its protection. The land was wooded when he acquired it in nineteen fifty-nine, and it has remained largely untouched since that time, with the exception of a plot he granted to the Frenchman Bay Riders Snowmobile, Snowmobile Club. Dr. Whitcomb passed these conservation values along to his daughters, and in nineteen ninety-one, he conveyed the land to them. As Judy and Kathy have become increasingly aware of the fragility and importance of the aquifer and the beauty of the woods, they became determined to secure conservation of the land with the assistance of Frenchman Bay Conservancy. As they treasure the legacy, legacy bestowed by their father, they named the property Whitcomb Woods in his honor. Kathy and Judy understand the importance of water quality and preserving public access to important natural resources. By protecting Whitcomb Woods with a conservation easement and transferring it to the town of Lemoine, they are vastly expanding the town's publicly accessible, accessible open space, allowing more people, more opportunity to enjoy Blunt's Pond, a key natural asset and community focal point. More importantly, they are ensuring that the land will continue to support healthy ecosystems into the future, enshrining their father's legacy as a living memorial. For these reasons, we are pleased to honor Catherine Dzinski and Judith Whitcomb with this award and thank them on behalf of all the citizens of Lemoine for bestowing a gift that will enhance our natural, our recreational resources and help preserve the town's natural beauty, water quality, and ecological richness. And even though Kathy and Judy are unable to be with us tonight, um, Aaron Dougherty of Frenchman Bay Conservancy is here and, um, I am inviting him to, uh, say a few words, uh, about Kathy and Judy and their gift to the town.
Thank you, Larissa. Um, I'll be brief because I know you've got a meeting ahead of you here. Um, I just wanted to say thank you so much on behalf of Kathy and Judy. I know they would be here if they can, if they could have been. Um, it was an absolute pleasure to work with them. This is one of the things that we do at Frenchman Bay Conservancy to protect land with conservation easements. And, uh, also it's a pleasure to work with the town. Um, we worked with the town a little while ago in, uh, conserving Marlboro Beach, and we also placed a conservation easement on Jerry and Simon, uh, Ira Simon's property, the Simon Preserve. This particular project, I believe it took about fourteen years to complete, which I think speaks to the perseverance of these sisters and the value that they placed on this land. So looking forward to the next fourteen or fifteen years and beyond, as you think about properties that you want to protect, um, either at the town level or individually, uh, please think of Frenchman Bay Conservancy and we're happy to work with you. Thank you.
Next up, I forgot I can take this off. Next up is our citizen of the year award, and to present that is the chairman of the board of selectmen, Gary McFarland.
Good evening, everybody. Um, for over four decades, uh, this person has been educating our children. They have been, uh, that, this person has been a leader among staff, taking on money, many student activities, and I've been told, let us not forget about the root beer cookies. Whereas Carol King Duffy has served our community for forty-three years as a teacher at the Lemoine Consolidated School, retiring in June twenty twenty, and whereas Carol has been an enthusiastic member of the Lemoine One Fifty Committee, serving in numerous capacities, and whereas Carol has been a frequent participant in Lemoine Community Arts productions and played a key role in preservation projects at the Lemoine Grange, and whereas Ms. Duffy has played a key role in morale boosting efforts for the staff at the Lemoine Consolidated School during the COVID nineteen pandemic, and whereas the Lemoine Board of Selectmen has instituted a citizen of the year honor. Therefore, be it resolved that Carol Duffy is hereby named Lemoine's Citizen of the Year for twenty twenty. The appreciation for her community service is hereby expressed on behalf of the grateful town. Would Carol please come forward?
Okay, of course I have to adjust the mic. Uh, when I came into the building today, I said, it's really nice you retire and then they ban you from the school for a year. Uh, so, so I'm really, um, was happy just to be back here and see everybody. And I will tell you, this has been a fabulous place, you know, my, my new home, I've, I've spent two thirds of my life here. And, um, I guess just thank you.
So my question, Carol, was this a well-kept secret or not?
I didn't know.
You didn't know? Yes! Did Moran? No. It was very well close, closely kept.
It's a good thing I'm here selling the Lemoine One Fifty merchandise.
Yes, buy lots of stuff from Carol. We hopefully have fireworks to pay for. How am I hearing myself?
Delay on the television and the.
Oh. Can you go turn? Cause that's really gonna be distracting. All right. It is time to get down to business. I will now call the spe, here's how it's gonna work. The special town meeting, which was scheduled for six o'clock on this date, will go first. That's the school budget part for the most part. And then that, that will be followed by the, uh, reconvening of the annual town meeting, which was recessed because of the COVID restrictions back in March. So I will call the, uh, special town meeting to order, and the first order of business is to choose a moderator to preside over said meeting. Uh, and I will entertain nominations at this time. I would note that Harvey Kelly, who was elected moderator of the recessed town meeting, is here and, uh, would be willing to be nominated to be the moderator of the special town meeting, hint, hint. Do I hear any nominations? It's moved for Harvey. Secuted. Are there any other nominations? We are still under the governor's executive order and protocols for town meetings, so normally this would require a written vote with a written ballot, but, uh, under special dispensation and executive orders and all that stuff, we can just do a show of hands. Hearing no other nominations, I will close them. All those in favor of Harvey Kelly to be your moderator, please hold up your cards. Great. Those who are opposed, put them down. Harvey, you are elected as the moderator of the town meeting. We get to swear you in. Again.
Yes. We ready?
Yep.
Time out.
I could have written it in a bigger font. It would have helped.
I, Harvey Kelly, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. So help me God. So help me God. I, Harvey Kelly, do swear that I will discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help me God. I brought a pen. I actually brought glasses, too. You will want that back.
Okay, before you get started. We have one more piece of business to get out of the way, and this is another resolution. Whereas Harvey Kelly has served as the annual town meeting moderator for many years, beginning with the annual town meeting in May of 1992, and whereas Harvey has ably led the town meeting through countless warrant articles during that time, and whereas the LeMoyne Town Meeting attendees have remarked after virtually every meeting how professionally, smoothly, and neighborly that Harvey has overseen the meetings, and whereas Harvey has informed the town that the annual town meeting for 2021 will be the final town meeting that he will moderate for LeMoyne, therefore be it resolved that Harvey Kelly is hereby commended for a job well done as moderator for that many town meetings. Your efforts are truly appreciated by a grateful community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all. It's not only the last one I'm doing for you guys, it's the last one I'm doing, period. So, okay, yep, I need that. And I have that. So I think we're about ready to start here. And I have to tell you that I have enjoyed moderating your town meetings. This is a really exceptional group of people. You're easy to get along with. You put up with my mistakes from time to time, but I'm just getting too old to do this. So, okay, for those of you who may not have attended a town meeting that I've moderated in the past, I intend to run the meeting under the provisions of the Main Moderators' Manual, put out by the Municipal Association. The most current one is the sixth edition dated 2005. There are very little references in the state statutes as to a moderator, and hopefully we won't have to get into any of those. I do have some basic rules that I establish. One person speaks at a time, and you speak after being recognized by me. So if you want to speak to a question, raise your voter card, please. Direct questions or comments to me, if it's a question, I'll find somebody to answer it for you. As we deal with each motion, I will ask that you make a positive motion, in other words, a motion to pass. That way, we don't find ourselves voting yes when we want it to fail and no when we want it to pass. That confuses a lot of you, and it confuses a heck out of me. In the course of discussion of articles, I will give any person who wants to speak an opportunity to speak for the first time before I go back and recognize someone who has already spoken on that question. I don't take personal attacks amongst you folks. I'm not worried about me. I have a thick skin. But I don't take personal attacks amongst you folks. Those are unacceptable, and that's where the statutes will come in if necessary. For vanity, vulgarity, and obscenity, this is a business meeting, not a bar argument, so we won't do that. If two of you feel an absolute need to argue back and forth about a question, there's plenty of room in the parking lot. Just take your argument out there, please. Don't keep us sitting in anticipation of what the outcome of it in here. One thing I do need is, I would like a motion to allow non-residents to speak at the discretion of the moderator.
So moved.
I hear a second. Okay, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, those in favor, please hold up your cards. Get used to this, we're going to do a lot of this tonight. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. I should look behind you. Usually I'm off to the side of them, so I can see them without turning right around. Okay, now we get on with the articles on the warrant. I'm going to deal with Article II, and then I'm going to ask Superintendent Kane to talk to you for a couple of minutes before we get on to the rest of the articles. Article II, to see if the town will authorize appropriation of forty-nine thousand, four-hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents from the undesignated fund balance due to an error in the calculation of the municipal property tax rate for the 2019-2020 budget. And a note, due to the error which involved failure to subtract the total homestead exemption valuation from the total taxable valuation, the total of the property tax committed was lower by this amount, resulting in a mill rate that was lower than what it should have been. Could I hear a motion supporting Article II?
So moved.
And a second? Thanks. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article II? Hearing none, you're voting to authorize appropriation of forty-nine thousand, four-hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents from the undesignated fund balance to make up this shortfall. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article II is passed. And now, I'd like to recognize Superintendent Kane. Where is she? There she is, hiding right behind you. She's going to just go over the budget quickly for you to hopefully answer questions before they're even asked.
Let's see, just a couple of quick housekeeping things. I know probably all of you know this is Dawn McVale behind me, principal, and if you don't know, this is Adam Urbaska over here, Director of Special Education. And Adam, his position is shared between both Hancock and LeMoyne. And what does a special education director do? Well, they oversee all of the sped programming, but not just for students here at our schools. He's responsible for watching out for all of our students at any high school, so they could be at Sumner, or John Baps, or MDI Ellsworth, and probably several that I've missed. So he holds the whole for some very important students. So thank you both for all you do. And as an aside, I would be remiss if this year I didn't start by saying a gigantic thank you to the community members, officials from the town, the school board, parents, substitutes, and especially staff. Our staff, they are rock stars. What else can I say? And the administrators as well, and in particular, our students. Our students have been great. The changes that we've asked them to undertake for over a year, it's just unprecedented, and we've continued to have great attendance, and students are moving along and progressing, and my heart goes out especially to those teachers and the students, and thank you, parents, for all the support. We're very fortunate. I think we're one of maybe just a couple, maybe three schools in the county that have not had to close. Knock on wood, we're almost at the end of the year. I hope I don't regret that, saying that. It'll be my fault if something happens, but we're very fortunate, and a lot of that was, you know, great care that folks took to help us get through that. So thank you very much. So, just a few details to go over with you, won't keep you long, but I know from doing this for several years with you, there's questions that come up each year, they tend to be the same ones, and it might be helpful to just go right through those in the beginning. So I'm just going to walk through a couple pieces for you about the expenditure side of the budget. That's the page that has the grid on it, and just, there's a few pieces that have the blue arrows and to highlight what the differences are. The total increase this year locally is ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. What does that increase, you know, what makes up that increase? The largest increase, the largest piece of that is that we are adding an additional middle-level teacher. For many years, we've done grades five through eight with three teachers. That class is too large now. We're going from forty-four to sixty total students, and so we really have to have that additional teacher. If you've been here year after year, you've heard me talk about that probably the last couple of years, knowing that was coming. Our enrollment has grown and is very steady because I think LeMoyne's a great community to live in, and the school has a wonderful reputation. So that is the piece right there for adding a teacher and also a regular education technician that is available to help staff in a variety of different needs, not just particularly one student that might need assistance. To offset that a little bit, though, underneath of that, we do have a decrease in secondary instruction. That's for tuition. It's down a little over the forty-five thousand dollars, and the reason is, we basically, we have a very small group of students graduating from eighth grade, six students, and we have a very large group that's graduating twelfth grade, seventeen students. So for a year, we have a, you know, a little bit of a decrease there, which is just great to help us with some of those increases. Moving down to the special education cost center, we do have an increase there in speech therapy. We did have our speech therapists leave last year, and we were very fortunate to hire actually a resident, one of our own, Ian Bachman, who's done a great job and has subbed for us and worked in other capacities here. So we were fortunate to hire somebody so highly qualified to serve our students and replace that entry-level teacher that departed. Looking down under Student and Staff Services, there are really not a lot of changes, but you will see under Health Services, a reduction of a little over ten thousand dollars, and there's a note that says we've eliminated the nurse position, and we're keeping a thousand dollars for a stipend for health screenings with a registered nurse. There was a time when we needed a lot more nursing services based on students' health needs. We don't have that need right now, and we, which is good because there's quite a shortage of RNs in terms of getting folks to work in schools. We've shared that position collaboratively with MDI in the past. So we just want to make sure you know, there's no loss of services. We're not cutting any services. We have a nurse who will come and do the screenings and things like that, and of course, if something changed, we have a student move in that needed those services, we would make sure to take care of those needs. The increase in instructional staff training of a little over nine thousand dollars, that is made up of teacher requests for training and graduate-level courses, and of course, educational technicians as well. We do support their continued professional development. It's a contractual obligation that we have, but we're happy to do it, and that's probably a good place to point out that this year, as in most years, if we need to make reductions in the budget, the last thing we ever do is make a reduction in teacher requests to the budget. And so once again this year, none of their requests have been decreased. There's an increase in software, about seven thousand dollars. That's not because we want to keep kids plugged in for prolonged time periods, rather, we have an increase in some of the typical subscriptions that we have, those costs go up. And we also have several very highly engaging online curriculum pieces that teachers have noted have been tremendously helpful for students, and they want to keep those pieces, and we support that. Student transportation is probably one of the most exciting places. I would say we have an increase, and all for a great cause. We are, for many years, we have had contracted services with First Student, and we are next year entering into a transportation collaborative with three other districts that will be Hancock, Orienton, and Regional School Unit 25, which is Bucksport, and we will no longer be having First Student. We will own our own buses, and that collaborative will continue to lease the same garage with the same level of staff mechanics overhead as we've had before, but we will have brand-new buses, keeping all our drivers and our routes as intended. And so we'll have new buses. You won't be getting those messages that parents dread in the morning where, hey, there's a breakdown, you know, we've, as part of a, you know, as part of a contract like we've had before, you know, you're sort of like the youngest child out of seven, and you get the hand-me-down clothes every year. So our buses are always the oldest with the highest mileage, and we won't have that situation anymore. So there is an increase of sixteen thousand dollars for next year, but I did make a note, the way that state funding works is the subsidy for buses follows one year behind the purchase. So the following year, we will receive state subsidy, which will offset that increase, and in addition, we are, we will own the buses in five years, so five years from now, the cost that you have for purchasing them will come off of there, and you'll have a significant decrease. So we're very excited about that. It's a wonderful opportunity to be collaborative with neighboring districts, and I appreciate the support of the board on that and the work that everyone's done to go into making that happening. It's great to be able to do those things locally, and we envision exciting things. You know, those buses will be our own, so in the summer, instead of having buses that sit idle someplace else, you know, maybe there's a field trip that we want to do with senior citizens for LeMoyne, and we want to get them up to Bangor or to, you know, someplace like that. They're LeMoyne's buses now, so it'll open a lot of opportunities, we believe, to do some exciting things. And so those are really the biggest changes. Food service, down at the bottom, there is a decrease of about eleven thousand dollars. That's because there's an increase in federal funding for next year. All students will once again receive free breakfast and free lunch, and so I wanted to make sure that it was clear we're not cutting the food service program or any of the, you know, of the wonderful things that we do there. And so although that shows an increase of a hundred and six thousand, two forty-one on the expenditure side, if you turn that over to little pieces, you'll see right at the top under number one, the state EPS allocation, we do have an increase there of a little over eleven thousand dollars. And then that's in the budget difference column right at the top, and scrolling down that budget difference column, if you get down to the total local share, third from the bottom, you'll see that the increase, offset by that additional revenue sharing, is ninety-four thousand, nine oh one and thirty-eight cents. So a three-point-five percent local increase, and all of that increase, aside from the buses, which does serve students, all of that really is going directly to services to students in the classroom. A couple notes around the warrant articles that come up every year, and because these warrant articles are written, it's dictated in statute how these are put together, so we add the numbers, but there's always a few pieces that are confusing. Article number five, which says other instruction, we do make a note on there, co-curricular elementary athletics, but there's a lot on these pages, so in case you're missing it, that's not Dawn's limousine service. So it shouldn't, you know, unfortunately, it's titled other instruction, but co-curricular in athletics, very important to offering a well-rounded program for our students. Turning the page to Article 11, this is to expend funds for the school nutrition program. And so we'll come to Article 11 and review that for the expenditure, and then we get to Article 14 every time, which is the same number and also about food service, or excuse me, local nutrition. The difference is Article 14 is to appropriate it. So you must approve for us to raise it and then also to appropriate it. So that's why there's a redundancy there. Article 12, it's probably one of the most confusing articles there is, but the best way I can describe this to you, because you look at all those numbers and say, what are all those numbers? That number there, that one million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty, this article essentially is saying, that's the amount you have to raise locally in order to get your state share of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Okay? So it's just the way that it's written, but that's what it means. Got to raise that amount locally at least. Which brings me to Article 13. What is that number? That's the additional local share, which is the additional amount that's needed to fund the total budget, and you have to approve those two pieces separately. And why are they broken out that way? It's because our funding formula uses something called essential programs and services. Certain things are covered in that formula to make sure it's equitable, but there are many, many things in the formula that are not covered, like transportation, other instruction, the limousine. No, no, no. What's other instruction again? Co-curricular, extracurricular? And so that's what those pieces are. And then finally, Article 15, you have to vote on the total And then, finally, article fifteen, you, you have to vote on the total expenditure, uh, budget. And the last one, number sixteen, uh, authorizing the school committee to, um, transfer amounts that exceed more than five percent of a cost center. What can happen is, um, let's say we have, um, we have a big influx of students. We have to hire an additional educational technician or an additional teacher. If that cost center is over by more than five percent, um, we have to transfer that money from one cost center to another to cover that. What's most important for you to know is that we cannot exceed the total overall approved budget. But we have to, we have to move funds to balance out those cost centers, uh, by law. So, rather than have a town meeting just to bring everyone together and authorize, you know, something that might be five dollars over that five percent amount, uh, if we authorize the school committee to do that in head, um, they will take care of that. Uh, and that is all I have. Do you want me to take questions now or wait till they come through the? Thank, thank you very much.
That's your, uh, no. Well, you can have that one. It's got my nice highlights.
Where the heck, where is, oh, there it is. Never mind. Never mind.
Well, that's too bad.
You're good.
Because if you couldn't find him, we'd just have to, you know, vote to approve them all at once and...
No, see, I, I need the ones with the signatures on it. Okay. Now, these next series of articles are not raising money. They're authorizations to expend in what Superintendent Kane pointed out are the individual cost centers, all specified by state law. Article three, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for regular instruction. The school committee and budget committee recommend one million six hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents. And you, if you have the warrant in front of you, that's for K-two regular elementary instruction, three-eight elementary instruction, nine-twelve regular secondary, and gifted and talented program. Could I hear a motion supporting article three with the recommended amount? Thank you. And I've got a couple of other cards. I'll count one of those as a second, okay? Questions, comments, or discussion on article three? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend the amount of one million six hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents for regular instruction. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, hold yours up. Okay, put those down. Article three is passed. I am fully vaccinated, by the way. It's okay. It's, uh, it's allergy season and I'm a real, I'm a sufferer. Article four, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for special education. The school committee and budget committee recommend the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-one cents. And this is for K-twelve special education services. Could I hear a motion supporting article four with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second? Thank you. All over. Questions, comments, or discussion on article four? All right, I, I bring, oh, thank you, yours, sweetheart. I appreciate that. I did bring my own, but maybe it's better if I use this. This one has not been opened and I don't want any of you thinking that I might have put something else in my water bottle. Okay. I heard nothing in the way of, uh, questions, comments, or discussion on article four. So, those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article four is passed. Article five, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for other instruction. The school committee and budget committee recommend thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. That's elementary co-curricular and elementary athletics. Could I hear a motion supporting article five with the recommended amount? Got it? I've got enough cards up, uh, one of you'll second it, right? Yeah. Good. Questions, comments, or discussion on article five? Yes?
Can I ask, is there any conversation about pre-K at some point?
Okay, the question is, is there any, has been, there been any conversation about pre-K? And I don't know if the board or... Your principal would be a good person.
We've had lots of conversations about pre-K. Um, we put out some feelers to find out how many people in the community would actually utilize that service. And based on the number that we had, it was not, it was not a sound move for us. Uh, because what most people need are a full-day program and what we'd be able to provide to make it cost-effective would be a half-day program. And then, parents would be left with, with no daycare for the rest of the day. So, at this point, we're not moving towards a pre-K, but it's always a discussion and a conversation.
Answer your question? All right. Other questions, comments, or discussion on article five? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents for other instruction. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down. Those opposed, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Article five is passed. Article six, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for student and staff support. Your school committee and budget committee recommend one hundred and thirty-two thousand five dollars and fifty-two cents. This is for things like guidance, health services, curriculum, instruction staff training, library, instructional technology, and student assessment. Could I hear a motion supporting article six with the recommended amount? Okay, and I got a second back there. Thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on article six? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand five dollars and fifty-two cents for student and staff support. Hold up your cards if you're in favor. Put those down. Those opposed, hold your cards up. Put those down. Article six is passed. Article seven, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for system administration. The school committee and budget committee recommend one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Could I hear a motion? That's the school board, the superintendent, and business services. Could I hear a motion supporting article seven with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second? Or you can have, make the motion if you can second it. It works. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on article seven? Yes?
Can somebody explain what business services?
Hi there. So, um, business services are, we, uh, share services with Hancock, Lemoine, and the Elsworth School Department. So, uh, essentially, that's our lease, our space to, to lease with them, but we don't actually pay any rent to be there. All we do is pay a portion of the salaries for the people that we share. So, we share a business manager, we share a human resources, um, person, and we share an accounts payable person, and we share a front office, um, a front office assistant. And so, that's what that covers. And so, each of the three districts, by partnering together, our costs are lower altogether. You're welcome.
Other questions, comments, or discussion on article seven? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents for system administration. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article seven is passed. Article eight, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for school administration. The school committee and budget committee recommend one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. And this is for the office of the principal, not just the principal. Could I hear a motion supporting article eight with the recommended amount? Got one? Thank you. Second? We're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on article eight? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to spend one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-three cents for school administration. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article eight is passed. If your arm that you've been using gets tired, you can switch hands. It's okay. Article nine, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses. The school committee and budget committee recommend one hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article nine with the recommended amount? Yes, sir. Thank you. Second? Got it right there. Questions, comments, or discussion on article nine? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend one hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars for transportation and buses. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article nine is passed. Article ten, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance. The school committee and budget committee recommend one hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twelve cents. That's operations and maintenance and capital renewal. Could I hear a motion supporting article ten with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second? We're good. Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on article ten? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend one hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twelve cents for facilities maintenance. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. And article ten is passed. Article eleven, to see what sum, the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures. School committee and budget committee recommend thirty-one thousand fourteen dollars and seventeen cents. This is for your school nutrition program. Could I hear a motion supporting article eleven with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second back there. Thank you. I'm not ignoring you folks and I appreciate you. If you can get the cards up, as long as I get two, I know I've got a motion and a second. Questions, comments, or discussion on article eleven? Hearing none. You are voting to authorize the school administrative unit to expend for all, for, excuse me, thirty-one thousand fourteen dollars and seventeen cents for all other expenditures. Those in favor? Put them down. Those opposed? Put those down. That carries. Article eleven is passed. Article twelve. Now, this is one of the ones that has to be a recorded vote, right?
Right. You can just by showing this.
Yeah, I, I, that I'm familiar, that part I'm familiar with, but, uh, I just wanted to be sure before we got to that point. To see what sum, the municipality will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. The school committee and budget committee recommend two million ninety-one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And to see what sum, the municipality will raise as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the Maine revised statutes, Title twenty-eight, Section one-five-six-eight-eight. The school committee and budget committee recommend one, the amount of one million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one, fifty-seven cents. Could I hear a motion supporting article twelve with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second? Good. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on article twelve? Hearing none. Now, this has to be a recorded vote, so decide which arm is the least tired because you're going to have to hold them up while... It still will do this side. Keep your card up until they tell you it's okay to put it down, okay? Those in favor of article twelve as moved, please hold up your cards. You can put those down now, yeah. Okay. Now, we're going to do the same thing again. Those opposed, please hold up your cards.
Goose egg.
Goose egg. Article twelve is passed. Sixty-seven yes and zero no. Okay. Now, it wasn't all that painful. Article thirteen, shallow town of Lemoine, raise and appropriate nine hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by the same amount, nine hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. School committee and budget committee recommend the nine hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents for, in additional local funds. And the following reasons are given for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by that amount. The additional local funds are additionally, are locally raised funds over and above the school administrative unit's local contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in Essential Programs and Services, and local amounts raised for additional payment on non-state funded debt service that would help achieve the budget for educational purposes, for programs, excuse me. Could I hear a motion supporting this article with the recommended amount? I've got one there. Second there. We're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on thirteen? Yes?
Has it been taken into consideration how many kids, um, aren't going to be going to school because they're not going to be vaccinated in the fall?
You guys, I'll leave you guys to fight over who to answer that question.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind touching it. We, we've talked about this a lot and unfortunately, we have zero control over that. That was a vote that was made by the state of Maine and we are, we are just stuck with following the rules. So, um, we, we have been in touch with all of those parents and trying to help get that process going, if that's a process that they wanted to get going, but we can't force it. But we do have to enforce it at the school. I'm not sure if I, what else I can...
Answer your question, okay?
Yep.
Good. Other questions or comments on article thirteen? Yes? Sure?
No, I'm sorry. This was passed a couple of years ago. I forget, uh, everything after twenty-twenty hit is all kind of muddled in my brain. But, um, this, this law passed a, a couple of years ago and it was always set to be enacted and go into effect starting September of twenty-twenty-one. So, it's just those normal vaccines that the students are supposed to have. It has nothing to do with COVID at all.
Okay. Take care of your question? All right. Other questions or comments on article thirteen? Yes?
Sorry to be dense on this, but the amount under twelve, I'm assuming, is insufficient to cover all the things prior to that, which is why we're adding thirteen.
The amount under twelve is, as Superintendent Kane pointed out, is the amount that the state funding law says you've got to raise if you want any money from us.
Right.
And that plus what the state will kick in if you do raise that amount, which you have, you've done, uh, is not enough to fund the entire program.
So, we need the additional one.
Exactly.
Statute in thirteen to cover items, uh, three through, uh, eleven.
We will get to the total bottom line of the budget on article fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
But, yes, you're correct.
Yep. Other questions or comments on article thirteen? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents in additional local funds to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. And we need to keep them up. This one is another recorded vote. Get right to it there.
I got the front row.
This is a lot quicker than doing a written ballot. You all sat with this side? Okay. Put yours down. Okay. Now, before you guys stop looking at these people out here, those opposed, please hold up your cards. That was quick and easy. You can put those back down. Article thirteen carries by a vote of sixty-eight to zero. Okay. Now we'll go to fourteen. Article fourteen, shall the town of Lemoine raise and appropriate thirty-one thousand, fourteen dollars and seventeen cents for local nutrition allocation purposes, the school lunch program. The school committee and budget committee recommend thirty-one thousand, fourteen dollars and seventeen cents. Could I hear a motion supporting article fourteen with? Got him? And a second? Okay, we're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on article fourteen? Hearing none. You're voting to raise and appropriate thirty-one thousand, fourteen dollars and seventeen cents for the local nutrition allocation purposes. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. I don't think that has to be. No, that one's not a recorded vote, thank heavens. Okay, put those down. Those opposed, hold yours up. Those down. Article fourteen is passed. This will be another one of those recorded votes, so get ready. Article fifteen, to see what sum the municipality will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2021, and ending June thirtieth, 2022, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under Maine Revised Statutes, Title twenty-eight, Section one-five-six-nine-zero, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The school committee and budget committee recommend three million, two hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. See, there's what, that's where the, your total comes in, and from all those options. Could I hear a motion supporting article fifteen with the recommended amount? I've got enough for a motion and a second. Thank you, guys. Questions, comments, or discussion on article fifteen? Hearing none. You are authorizing the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2021, and ending June thirtieth, 2022, from all those sources, the amount of three million, two hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Those in favor, please hold up your cards and keep them up because they've got to count again.
This side's good?
Okay.
You guys heard that?
Heard it.
Consistent. Okay, those opposed, please hold yours up.
Zero.
He's right. So put those down. Okay, article fifteen is passed. Sixty-seven yes, zero no. Okay. Now, the final article. Shall the Lemoine School Committee be authorized to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the 2021 and 2022 fiscal year? Could I hear a motion supporting article sixteen? I've got it. Second over here. Thank you, sir. And questions, comments, or discussion on article sixteen? Yes?
Can I amend the article to read, shall the Lemoine School Committee by unanimous vote, blah, blah, blah?
I think we can tweak numbers in articles, but I don't think we can tweak language.
I, I think that's a problem. I wish it wasn't, but that, that is pretty close to a substantive, substantive change in the meaning of the article, and we're not allowed, it's just like, just like an ordinance, we're not allowed to do that at a town meeting. They can't spend more than what you, what you allow them to in article fifteen anyway. It's a matter of if they've got a surplus in one, in one of those cost centers in the first articles, they could, if they had to, transfer it to other cost centers to cover shortfalls. I, I, I don't think we can do that, sir. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
First of all, I appreciate that, but yeah, the, the primary reason for doing this, Katrina mentioned earlier, but I'll reiterate, is that we're just trying to make life easier for Lemoine residents in the, you know, if we found ourselves needing to move more than five percent, it would require a town meeting. So instead of having another town meeting with all the noticing and getting everybody here to presumably say yes, we're trying to take care of the eventuality today, so.
I'm only acting the school committee vote unanimously.
Oh, I see.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, as moderator, I really think that that is, creates a substantive change to the, what the intent of the article. So I can't allow it. Okay. Questions, other questions, comments, or discussion on article sixteen as presented? Hearing none. You're voting to authorize the school committee to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay? Put those down. Those opposed, hold yours up. Okay. Put that one down. Article sixteen is passed.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
May I request about a three-minute recess to change the front table and give people a chance to stretch their legs?
You, you just hang on because that's coming.
Okay.
There is, there is nothing else on the warrant, and therefore, we cannot take up anything that's not on the warrant. So there's no more business. It can come before the meeting. I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, folks. And now, let's take five minutes. I know Stu can do it in three, but we're not going to chance that. Okay, folks. Those of you with good memories will remember that we dealt with the first four articles back on March ninth, and the results of the voting on articles two, three, and four are up there on the graphic. If anybody needs me to, I can read those, but should be okay on that. Open town meeting was briefly held on March seventeenth as scheduled, and the meeting was immediately recessed until tonight due to the attendance restrictions under the state COVID regulations. And here we are. And there's a lot more people than I saw last year, I got to tell you, folks. This gym was pretty sparsely populated last year. The one thing I have to do again, I don't think I need to go through the moderator's manual procedures and everything else, but the one thing I do have to do, since this is a second, a separate meeting, I would like a motion to allow non-residents to speak at the discretion of the moderator.
So moved.
Got it? And a second? Thank you. Okay. Any questions on that? Please hold up your cards if you're in favor of allowing non-residents to speak at the discretion of the moderator. Okay? Put those down. Those opposed? We're good. Otherwise, every time a non-resident asks to speak, we have to have a vote, and I, we have to count it because it's two-thirds. So this speeds things up quite a bit. Okay. Moving along. Article five, to see if the town will vote to set the date that property taxes will be due in two equal payments on August thirty-first, 2021, oh, 2021, not 20,000, boy, and February twenty-eighth, 2022, and to fix the rate of interest at six percent to be charged on the unpaid amounts beginning September one, 2021, and March one, 2022, respectively, and to fix the rate of interest paid for overpayments at two percent per annum. Could I hear a motion supporting article five? Got it? And a second? Thank you. Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on article five? Hearing none. You're voting to set the date that property taxes are due in two equal payments, August thirty-first, 2021, and February twenty-eighth, 2022, and fix the rate of interest at six percent on unpaid amount, to be charged on unpaid amounts, starting the next day following each of those first ones, and to fix the rate of interest paid for overpayments at two percent. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article five is passed. Article six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to offer to sell any property automatically acquired by tax liens to the previous owners for payment of all back taxes, fees, and interest. Should the previous owner decline to redeem the property after thirty days' notice, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to advertise for sealed bids on same and stating the lowest bid acceptable, and to execute upon specific town meeting approval a quitclaim deed to the highest responsible bidder, and further to allow the selectmen to authorize the treasurer to waive automatic lien foreclosures when it is in the best interests of the town. If the sale is to anyone other than the former owner, the Board of Selectmen shall follow the special sale process required by Title thirty-six, being revised statutes annotated, Section nine forty-three C, for qualifying homestead property. Could I hear a motion supporting article six? Got it? And seconds? All right. Thank you. I, unless it's specifically requested, I will, when we come to the vote, I will not completely reread every one of these articles. I may summarize it very briefly, but. Okay. Article six has been moved and seconded. Is there questions, comments, or discussion on article six? Hearing none. You're authorizing the, the selectmen to follow the procedures outlined in the article and also tying them to special sale process in Title thirty-six. also tying them to special sale process in Title 36, main revised statutes annotated? Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article 6 is passed. Article 7. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sell and/or dispose of any property or fixtures deemed to be surplus and unusable to the town and worth less than $1,000 fair market value under such terms and conditions as they deem advisable after advertising such items publicly. Could I hear a motion supporting Article 7? Got it? In a second. Thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 7? Hearing none. You're voting to give the selectmen that authorization to sell or dispose of as long as it's worth less than a thousand bucks. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay. Put those down. Those opposed, hold yours up. Put those down. Article 7 is passed. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds from the money received from the state of Maine for registration of snowmobiles to the Frenchman's Bay Riders Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining snowmobile trails. Could I hear a motion supporting Article 8? And a second? Got it? Thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 8? Hearing none. You're voting to enact Article 8 as presented. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. Yes, sir. Okay. Put that down. We're all set. Article 8 is carried. Article 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 taxes not yet committed and set the rate of interest at 0% for overpayments pursuant to Title 36, main revised statutes annotated, Section 506. Could I hear a motion supporting Article 9? Second? Okay. Cards up for that? Thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 9? Hearing none. You're voting to approve Article 9 as presented. Those in favor, please hold up the cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. Put those down. Article 9 is passed. Article 10. To request the townspeople of Lemoine to amend the shoreline zoning ordinance, Tax Map 13, Lot 50, owned by Glenn and Donna Crawford, from limited residential zone to commercial fisheries and maritime activity zone. This article was requested by a citizens petition. Could I hear a motion supporting Article 10? And a second? Got it? Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 10? Yes?
I remember talking with people about this when they first brought it up, and I think it's great that they want to do fishing out of that lot, but it seems to me to set a really dangerous precedent to have the zone changed in the middle of an area that's just one lot changed in a zone that covers many properties. So it doesn't seem, I don't see the rationale for it, since he can be fishing from that lot anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, sir? Why don't you come up? Why don't you come up and take the microphone? It'll be a little easier. Why don't you get out? Yeah. I guess.
My name is Glenn Crawford. I am the owner of 46 to Patrick Lane, and I have brought this request to the town. I was, my wife and I were fortunate enough to purchase Ruth Saliba's old property back three years ago, which used to be George Bracy's. I don't know how many people remember doing it very simply. I ain't...
Can you talk longer into the microphone? We're having trouble. Thank you.
All right. There we go. So the property used to be owned by a man named George Bracy. He was a commercial fisherman, lobsterman, clam digger, and local character. Yeah. To say the least. And so we were fortunate, three years ago, to be able to purchase this land with the anticipation of retiring there, obviously. It's a beautiful piece of property, but it also is access to Eastern Bay and Frenchman's Bay. There's 850 feet of shore frontage. It was historically used for trade on the ocean, back as far as the early 1800s. The Fitzpatrick's used to trade vegetables and fruits off of that point to the sampling vessels, and George Bracy conducted his lobstering and clamming operations out of there. Since he was not there when the town rezoned the area, it was zoned residential because there was a residential property there. The only zone in Lemoine that is commercial fisheries is Seal Point Lobster Pound, and that's because it was in existence when the zoning was done. Now, had George Bracy been in existence at the time, he would have been grandfathered or whatever you wish to call it, the same way Seal Point Lobster Pound would have been. And I have a representation, this is a picture of George Bracy's operation in 1970. It shows his dock, his workshop, his bait shop, his another workshop, and this is his traps, and this goes around into a cove where he had a railway, which he hauled his boat out so he could do maintenance and repairs on it. Now, granted, this was 30-plus years ago, and the previous owners didn't wish to pursue the commercial venture, but I'm fortunate enough to have a commercial fisherman as a son who fishes out of Lemoine. And before we purchased this land, all the commercial fishermen in Lemoine, they only have one place to go to fish, and that's the state park. And the state park is, I've spoke with several different entities in the state, and I don't know if anybody's ever dealt with the state, but you never get a complete answer from any, anybody. But as near as I can tell, commercial operations inside of a state park are not a normalcy. And Lemoine is definitely not a normal operation. There are commercial trucks going down there to pick up lobsters, and there has been some controversies down there in the past, and talking with the rangers or whatever you call them that run the place, there is a distinct possibility that the commercial fishing men that work out of the state park could be denied the ability to work out of there as a commercial venture. And with that in mind, and buying this property and knowing the history of this property, I felt that it was important that I continue the ability of the fishermen in Lemoine, not just my son, but other fishermen in Lemoine, the access to go to work every day. And if they lose that ability at the state park, there is no other place in Lemoine, and Lemoine has miles of shore frontage, which has no access. This has historically been a fishing spot. And Carol, to your question, you said you don't understand the reasoning. The reasoning is, is that it always was used for commercial fishing, and just because it hasn't been in the, in the previous years, now there's an opportunity for the next generation to come up and continue that process. I'm not asking to change anything, but what you have to understand is that a residential site, you are not allowed to do the things that you're allowed to do in a commercial fisheries zone.
You wouldn't be able to fish from that site.
Well, you don't fish from it anyway, Carol. But the point is, is that in the town ordinance, you have various classifications in which you can do things in different zones. If this is approved tonight, it still does not give me a open checkbook to write whatever I want. You still have to go in front of the code enforcement. You still have to go in front of the planning board to do whatever it is that you might be able to do in that designated zone. This is simply changing the zone so that we can do the things that are antiquated with the commercial fishing industry, primarily the lobster fishing out of Lemoine. I can throw a rock from my property to the mooring field in the state park. That's how close this is. So it's almost an extension of the state park. We have one neighbor, and that's my wife's Aunt Joanne, and she's on the, between us and the state park. Now, with that being said, the town has been taxing this property, including me, since I've owned it, for a bait shed and a workshop on the pier, on the, on the point down there, which, I don't know if I showed you folks that. These two buildings are still in existence, and they, on the tax record, in the town of Lemoine, we're still getting taxed for a bait shed and a workshop, which is not allowed in a residential zone. Now, the word grandfathering, I've been told that that's not applicable anymore, but we're paying taxes on a piece of property that I feel that we should be able to utilize without causing any detriment to our neighbors or anything else or the environment, but it's putting it back the way it was so that the next generation of fishermen can have access to the shore and continue to do what they do.
Could I ask you another question?
Sure.
If it, if it is no longer residential, and you said that you had hoped to retire on it, does that mean you would not be able to live in a house on it if it's no longer residential?
Okay. So there is a conception out there that you can't have a house on a commercial fisheries, maritime activity property. If you go up and down the coast of Maine, you'll notice that almost 75%, and this is a number that came from the DMR, 75% of the working waterfronts are usually livable sites where people have houses on them. And the state of Maine is very adamant about maintaining these working waterfronts because they realize that they're disappearing, and that as the properties are sold to high-priced developers or whatever, that access is, is lost. And if you think about this and look back at the history of Lemoine, there was many, many operations along the Jordan River in Lemoine. There are none. Zero. Seal Point Lobster Pound and the state park are the two places in Lemoine. Now, Lemoine Beach, you can't really do anything at Lemoine Beach. I mean, you know, it's, it's a public place, but you ask any of the fishermen, you couldn't moor in a boat out there, you couldn't launch a boat there. It's just not where you can do business as a fisherman. Now, in the state park, you have, I believe, 11 commercial fishermen in the town of Lemoine. I can remember when there's only one or two. So this industry is not going away, but the access to their job site is. And like I said, I was fortunate enough to be in the right place at the right time, and I jumped on this in hopes to pursue the ability for my next generation of children, either my daughter or my son, to take and continue what they're doing, and maybe even my granddaughters, and other folks in town that need to access the shore.
So it would be up to you if someone else out, other than your family, would be able to use it?
Absolutely. I mean, it's private property, but the, the point is, is that it's, it's a historically piece of property that was used for accessing the fishing industry. And yes, there is a residence on it. Ruth Saliba built a nice house on it, which we live in it, but that's typical of Maine working waterfronts. And I spoke to a lady called Deidra Gilbert at the DMR, and she said that the state encourages people to keep their property in working waterfront because of the fact they realize it's a, it's a, it's going away, and it's getting harder and harder for these local commercial fishermen to access their boats and to get back and forth from the shore and everything. And so that's why I proposed this. I'm not going to pull any wool over anybody's eyes. I don't plan on doing anything down there other than what we're already doing, basically. The railway is in such disarray, it would not be cost-effective to repair it. I'd like to haul it out of there. There's a bunch of steel railroad tracks and stuff that are down there that, it just doesn't make any sense, not with the, the local boat haulers and stuff nowadays. You don't need a railway, but as far as like working down there and hauling your skiff up at high tide or tying your boat to a pier if there ever becomes one, I certainly have envisions of one if I could ever afford it, but at this point in time, that's probably not in the cards. But this is the first step in order to, you know, guarantee that that property remains in the fishing industry for as long as, as long as I own it, and hopefully as long as my heirs own it.
Are there others that have questions for Glenn?
Can't hear you, Harvey.
I said, what I said was, I need to see if there are other people who want to have something to say on this in addition, and I've got two, I've got one right here, and you'll be second, and you'll be third. You'll be fourth.
Can they speak into a microphone as, as Mr. Crawford did?
You guys can share, you guys share the microphone.
Jeez, girl, you can't get this thing out of here.
Leave it on the stand, but I can show you.
How does this affect the tax rate that you pay, and what prevents anybody else that owns shorefront property from doing the same thing?
That's a very good question. The effect of the tax rate, you have to apply through the state and the assessors of the town to get a tax break. And yes, you can get a tax break depending on a formula. Now, I talked to Jane Fowler, who's one of the assessors, and she said that it may affect my taxes about a thousand dollars. My taxes are almost $10,000 a year there. It really is, it's 10%. That's not why I'm doing this. I'm doing this to ensure that this is going to be access to the fishing community.
What prevents anybody else that owns shorefront property from applying to the same thing?
Nothing that I know of. I mean, this, this is something that I'm doing on my own. I'm not doing this as a, as a collaboration or anything else. It's just that I have a piece of property that historically has been in the fishing community, and that is one of the criterias for being in the commercial fisheries, working waterfront zone, is that the historic value of it, and that's why I'm here.
Glenn, if the state park does hold flood on lobster fishing, would you have, give access to those?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I would not refuse. The only way that I would refuse anybody from using this property as access, if there was a reason that would cause problems down there, such as, well, we're all aware of, and I won't mention any specific groups, but trash being left around parking areas that are used to access the mud flats or the clam flats or the fishing, you know, those type of things, if you don't have enough common sense to respect the property, you don't deserve to use it. So...
Can't, can't hear him.
Can't hear you. Can you talk?
Speak up as loud as you can. There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. What would, what would I use for that water from, that boat? I remember being down there as a kid, and that has got one of the best people on a anchor. I was finally, I was, I wanted to see if it was, and it was a clean operation, and I see no reason that I could be used to it. Thank you. No. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
Oh, okay.
So this is not a question for you, Glenn. This is a statement to people. As, my name is John Holt. I live in Lemoine Beach Road. As chair of the planning board, I'm very, very familiar with the shoreline zoning ordinance, spent the last two or three years with the other members of the board, updating it, bringing it into compliance with the state. And it's my understanding that the ability to get a permit for a pier and to do some lobster fishing from your property is currently permitted under the current designation. There's no reason why that can't happen. It's... All right. I'm sorry. Let me start over then. As chair of the planning board, I spent a long time in the last three years working with other members of the board, updating the shoreline zoning ordinance, bringing it into compliance, becoming familiar with many of its details. And it's my understanding, and all the regulations, that it's certainly permissible for Glenn or any shoreline owner to build a pier, get a permit for that, as long as you meet other obligations and requirements from the state, and to fish, put some traps in your boat and go, if you have a license, and, and fish under the current limited residential district designation. designation of the property. That's one point I would make. To best of my knowledge, other than, uh, very thoughtful futuristic kind of look at what might take place in Lemoine, there is no specific or concrete proposal at all for a commercial maritime activity on the particular property of such scope, such as a co-op, or public access, or anything, there's nothing in place, other than an idea, uh, that would warrant or require the change in designation from limited residential district, it's not a zone, the, the actual article is poorly worded, uh, the limited residential district to the commercial fisheries maritime activities district for the shoreline portion of this parcel. Changing the district designations before, there is a substantial plan in place, if there's already legal documents granting public access, uh, all sorts of other things you've gone through. Doing this as an idea, like somebody owning on the Jordan River saying, I want to do this because it used to be a boatyard, and I might wanna have a boatyard someday, I don't have any plans, but I might, so change it. I think that gets into the spot zoning problem that's very problematic for the community. So in some sense, I'm saying, I, I'm gonna vote against this. Much of it is a matter of timing. If down the road, uh, the fishing community in Lemoine, uh, things developed, and they wanted to talk about developing a co-op, and developing a property, a substantial amount of shorefrontage, as somebody commented, it's a good, good place to put a boat in, uh, then this could be revisited with lots of guarantees, that it isn't just, you know, if I like you, you're not messy, you can come down. Is this truly public access? Is it truly commercial? Will it meet with all the state obligation? That kind of insurance is gonna have to be in place, so I think we got the cart before the horse here. Then, then people could come to the town, and the town, the permitting agencies in the state, and say, we have this proposal, we've worked it out pretty carefully, it's got a lot of support, this is the way it could work, this is the way we're willing to have our property used, and it's put in black and white and legally binding things, and then at that point, the town could say, is this something that we wish to propose? So I, I'm not opposed to the sort of the, the dream that you may have, and the hope, but I think you can do what you want for yourself, and if your son wants to fish there, uh, you just can't park your cars quite as close to the pier, that's probably the biggest limitation you have at this point. It's an idea that, it isn't in fruition enough at this point for the town, I think, to give authorization just to spot zone it because you wanna do it. Thank you.
Okay, before, before I go back, let me check, uh, another one, I need to get the folks that haven't spoken yet. Yes?
Question for Mr. Holt, does the Department of Environmental Protection shoreline zoning have to approve the zoning change and the map change prior to this being, or going into effecting their council?
If, if this were approved by town meeting, uh, any, anything that the town authorizes must go to the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection for, I believe it's his approval, I don't know who, who sits in the position now, uh, before it becomes effective. It is a state ordinance, the state shoreline ordinance, and Lemoine has to be in compliance with it, or stricter than it, but everything must be approved. We can't do what we want to, and say, we'd like to have a setback at a hundred and fifty feet, not one hundred, or, or seventy-five. It's gotta be approved. So unless, you have to anticipate, what would the commissioner look at as to why ought to approve such a designation? So yes, the state has to approve it, or, or it doesn't happen.
Over there.
Are, are there any adjoining property owners present, um, that can speak to their feelings about the proposed redoning?
I can answer that.
Everybody?
Yeah. I, I spoke with all the property owners, and they all signed my petition to get it through the town.
Are there, are there any owners that are here tonight?
No, there isn't. They're all, oh.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick comments, um, what we're doing tonight is, is a question posed earlier by Carol, so I'm looking for something, I'm, you know, do, you know, what is to stop future property owners from proposing something like this? It, it seems to me it's, it's a good judgment of the town, that this plan, in my opinion, is not a reasonable plan.
I can't do that.
Somebody else is planning something, and I may oppose it, so, in that regard, with John's comments regarding, sort of this collectivist nature, that that's what they're just, uh, using the property, I think, I think that's a, a wrong way to look at this, it may personally never by the, the property families, it's not required that it be a co-op or a, or this sort of collective entity that has to, that.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Holt. Did you explain to us, you mentioned spot zoning, could you explain to us broadly what that would be?
Broadly what that would mean? Right now, the, for the, for the town, for example, the town is divided into essentially an agricultural and rural zone, a development zone, and a residential zone, in addition to the shoreline zone, which is kind of imposed on all of those within the first two hundred and fifty feet from the shore. So you have these zones. Right now, for example, if you owned a piece of property.
But you forgot there's only a commercial fisheries maritime activities, that is a zone.
No, it's a district in the shoreline zone. That's, you gotta, it's not, so please. There are three zones, and, if, if I owned a piece of property in the development zone, and I, or in a residential zone, for example, like I do now, and I discovered that on my, my three acres, I have a lot of gravel. Right now, I could not get a gravel permit because of the current zone, but if I petition the town to designate my, my parcel as in the development zone, so I just take my parcel development zone, I've got, a lot of people come out to support it, to pass it, uh, then I could get a gravel permit, even if it's right next to a school or something else. It's, it's taking it into a, a single plot and applying a designation that's sort of distinct from all the other lots around it. So it's, it's one at a time, rather than saying, the shore as generally, we want it to be commercially developed for the future of Lemoine, or we want it preserved for environmental reasons for the town, you know? Which direction do you wanna go? And you, if you pick and choose various spots to do various things, you get into this difficulty in having a town, cohesive town, I think.
So, who, when the town's zoning, who oversees this decision, will be on the town and the state, if there's something that might.
The, the state approves, the state approves everything in the shoreline zone. The town approves the zoning of the agricultural and rural, and the development zone, and the, uh, resident, strictly residential zone up in Buttermilk Road area. Those are town decisions. Any vote of the town could change everything to development zone for chose to, or something else.
Other questions, comment? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that in theory, I'm in favor of this project, of this proposal. I've been to, I do a lot of work, with work involving working waterfronts, I know the situation of the state park is pretty vulnerable, but I think as, uh, it grows more popular in terms of recreational uses, I think the conflict between the fishermen and, uh, people fishing at the end of the water, and the pleasure boats, I think, is just gonna increase. Uh, but I do think, uh, the, the final arbiter on this is the state, so a decision, whether we can get tonight, it doesn't really carry all that much weight, front it out, I'm not saying whether to vote for it or against it, but this is not really gonna make any, any decision as to what happens here. And I also think if you, if you look at the ordinance, uh, I think in the commercial fisheries maritime activity zones, you cannot have a dwelling, single-family dwelling within the shoreline zone.
You, you can't construct a dwelling if it's in the zone. If there's one there now, it's acceptable. I spoke with the state about this, and they encourage people with dwellings on commercial waterfront, if it's in a working waterfront, to keep it for security reasons, and for other family reasons, to keep it in the family. But yes, there is, like I said, seventy-five percent, the lady told me, of working waterfronts have residential properties on them.
Right, but it could be grandfathered and, you know, carried over.
Absolutely.
It's totally up the DDP's side, you know.
But if, if I could.
Just comment one thing.
Okay, here you are. You've read a long time of talk. We need to make sure that there's not somebody here, Glenn, that hasn't had a chance and would like to.
Yes. Yes.
Can you just talk louder? Louder. Louder.
Come on down.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Jesus, soft words.
There.
Thank you, Glenn, dear. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Okay. Um, I, I just wanna get this clear for me, 'cause I'm not sure I understand the spot zoning, and I wanna understand the precedent business. Um, let me just make this up, 'cause this is kinda how I understand things. Where we live now, and where we used to live, were both farms. So, under this, I could come to the town and say, this used to be a farm, and I'd like to bring in a herd of cows onto my land, um, or pigs, or, or whatever. Um, I, I, and I could come to the town and say, this is traditionally how it was used a long time ago, and so I wanna do this, and it's okay, and they would carve off this little piece and say yes or no. Not the town would, the, the town meeting would say yes or no, is that, is that how, how, I mean, is that the precedent? Am I understanding this right?
I'm not sure, I apologize.
Oh, gosh, that's as simple as I can make it.
If, if I might.
What's gonna happen to my cast?
Can I speed up?
You may respond to her question, yes.
So, this, this issue of spot zoning, um, I served as selectman here for nine years, and I'm, I'm well aware of the things that go on in the town.
Glenn, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, spot zoning, uh, if you think about the term spot zoning, whenever you look around Lemoine, you're gonna see home occupancies, you're gonna see businesses, you're gonna see residential properties, you're gonna see farms, Seal Point Lobster Pound is a commercial fisheries venture, these are all spot zoned. There's not a section of land, such as Ellsworth, where I have a business in Ellsworth, that thirty-three years ago, I bought sixty acres, and it was residential, and I had to get it rezoned to commercial. I was the only one on the Bucksport Road. Everything was residential. They zoned it commercial. Well, now, the whole road is commercial, because as everybody applied for a commercial permit for their land, it became obvious that it needed to be rezoned all commercial. With Lemoine, you have a predominantly residential community, and if you're gonna rezone a piece of property, it's not gonna be a large tract of property, it's gonna be individuals such as the boat shop down here on the corner, such as John Burnett's Repair Shop, such as Seal Point Lobster Pound, S W Boat Works. There are many entities that, the Lemoine General Store. These are all zones that have been, uh, used in the pursuit of their businesses. That doesn't mean they blocked out a whole, a whole bunch of land to, to accommodate these businesses. And so, I mean, I'm only asking for my piece of property to be returned to the historic value and the, the designated use that it's been for many, many years, and I wanna continue the fishing industry down at that property. And I think I've done it the right way, and hopefully everybody will agree with me. I don't know what else there is to say as far as, now, I will say that the state, talking with the state, that John brought up a good point, he says, well, I can get a pier, and we can fish out of there. Yes, you can, it's, it's a, um, permitted use in the residential zone. The problem is, is that you can't have a bait shed down there, you can't store traps down there, you're not even supposed to have a road that goes down to the point. Now, this is according to the state, this gal that I talked to at the state. You can't store rope, you can't store traps, you can't have a bait shed, you can't have a workshop, all these things are not permitted uses according to the state. So therefore, if you can't use the land for what it was used for previously, and what we would like to continue using it for, how can the town say that it's, it can be used for that? It can't be. So it has to be rezoned to commercial fisheries in order to allow that permitted use.
Hank, uh, Glenn, I, I remember when you, you came to the select board meeting, and you presented, uh, to us what the concept was, and you had a picture of the particular property. I'm familiar with that property, 'cause nineteen eighty-four, I spent, uh, the whole summer in that cabin, and I used the outhouse, which was, 'cause there was no plumbing. I dug clams off that, and on Labor Day, I had lobsters and clams by myself, 'cause nobody else would hang out with me at that time. But I, um, I think you've got an amazing piece of property. In nineteen eighty-seven, and I will say, I served on the, on the comprehensive planning committee, which did, in, in its, in writing now, did advocate for more space for commercial fisheries and maritime activities. That was part of what our finding was, in that we were looking for more land that was available, and, and it's unfortunate that this may have got zoned a little prematurely. But in nineteen eighty-seven, um, the Board of Appeals, uh, was, uh, the last step before the salmon farm came before, uh, the town, and it was a, there's a big meeting in this room, and it was a close vote, and it was going to court, and the stock market fall of nineteen eighty-seven took the investor, the owner of that land away, and he sold it to the Salibas. Since then, it has been a residential area, it has been a residential property. People have bought next to it with that assumption, the Salibas certainly did, unfortunately didn't get to, to live there as long as they might have. Um, my concern about the history, Glenn, is that schooners were built in the mid eighteen hundreds. That's what Lemoine was known about, building schooners. There was enough lumber coming around from however they got it here, or whether they milled it here, but they were building, uh, two masted schooners, and, uh, I happened to live in the house of one of those captains, the Sherman Douglas Highway, and so there is a lot of history, and there was a sardine factory down at the Lemoine Beach. So there's no question that we have an incredible abundance of shorefront that should be used for those purposes that are suited. Having said that, it seems if it's a private property, Glenn, that to take it, uh, as an amendment to this thing, there isn't enough, uh, information about the planning of how that goes. You met with us initially, you actually said that you were planning for your son, Cam, who's fishing out at Dysetts in Southwest Harbor as well, as I, I heard at that time, or, and here, and it was difficult, 'cause I have neighbors that find it difficult to be able to fish and, and, and keep their living going because of the state parks having to pull the, the wharfs and so forth, so we can certainly see the restrictions in some ways for the, for the commercial fishermen that live in Lemoine. However, the, if, if there isn't a plan, and there hasn't seemed to be a plan that really addresses who is gonna have access to it, and it is going through a residential area, if the Bartezinskis sell their property to somebody who wants it to be a residence, and anybody else in the area, then they may have some concerns with the restrictions or whatever laws and, and stipulations are put on it. So, uh, it, it seems though, that, I didn't know Mr. Bracy, but I knew his, his property pretty intimately, I thought it was an amazing piece. I was, I was pleased that somebody in Lemoine had actually, uh, purchased it, and, and I thought that that's where it would stay. But I do think that going forward with a, a well devised plan that appropriately addresses Lemoine fishermen, so they can have access, so that nobody's excluded, or the difficulties that might come. That's my concern, is that we may have something down the road, Glenn, that will be more of an issue than simply, uh, allowing this to be amended. Thank you.
Okay, are there others who have not yet spoken who wish to speak to this question? I think it's been pretty well said, yes, sir.
My, my only concern in addressing this way, Glenn, is.
Can you talk louder, please? It's hard to hear.
I definitely can speak louder. My only concern in addressing this across the board is the fact that, we always seem to kind of miss the fact that Glenn and Donna own the property. We're so focused on what people can't do with their property, they're trying to do something positive that the state has recognized as disappearing, commercial fisheries. To your point, what are you gonna do with it? I'd like to say, none of your business.
Amen.
Although there's gonna be questions brought up and disapprovals. I've gone through DDP processes across the board for years on, on Lobster Pound, on restoring Lobster Pound, yield grabs, dealing with those issues all the time. There's enough restrictions. Now, in Lemoine, we add more restrictions. We only, we don't have any commercial fisheries in this town. Keeping one alive or creating one, so that others can have an opportunity, rather than everybody from Massachusetts to Connecticut, everywhere else, buying up every piece of property that we own in Lemoine, it's turning into another blue hill. We have fishing. This livelihood that needs. There's livelihoods that need to be made and it's just common sense. Let's use the property for what it has an opportunity to be used for. And not just shut it down and just say, "Well, we'll deal with it when it comes." It takes three years to get a permit from DEP. I'd rather get the process started now so we don't have to worry about that later. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming up to the microphone.
I haven't prepared for this, so I may kind of stumble along a bit. But I was a member of the Planning Committee. We worked for five years for this town to develop a plan that we hoped represented what the town wanted. And we had all kinds of community meetings where we were, where we tried to identify the priorities for the town. At no time did this come up. And I hear that we need to value private property. Yes, that was a big, that was something that we considered, but we also considered the community and what the community wanted. We're not talking about individuals right now. We're asking for a community vote. And we have, and at, we spent a lot of time on, on the Planning Committee trying to meet the needs of the community as a whole. And I, it might be that we could use property front for fisheries, for commercial fishing. However, that did not become part of the plan. It was not proposed as part of the plan and that was the time and the opportunity to bring it forward. I think that what a lot of people are having a problem with is how it is being done. And I just need to register that. I just need to register that piece.
No problem. Okay, we, I think we did fairly well. Go ahead.
What year was the current zoning map that exists?
Mr. Moderator. Well, the current shoreline zoning map was passed when the shoreline zoning ordinance was amended, I believe, two years ago. The initial shoreline zoning map and this, the zoning for this lot has not changed since the shoreline zoning ordinance was adopted, I believe, in 95. Somewhere around there.
My point is, if Cameron's fishing in 1995, there were probably two boats out of Lemoine.
Say that again?
Two boats out of Lemoine in 95.
Carol!
It's going to change.
We just passed it.
But people are going to need to have access to the foundation of the portfolio of the property.
Okay, do we have any more that needs to be said on this tonight? Yes, ma'am. Okay. No. We, we, we beat this right to death and you responded to that same thing a couple of times already. Thank you. Okay, are you ready to vote on this, folks?
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
Can we have a secret ballot, please?
Okay, we have a request for secret ballot and we can do that. Okay.
For us to pass them out and then them to put in here.
Yep. That's fine. Pass them out and then put them in here.
We will do that. It's not a problem. Now, those of you that came up to the podium, one of you has my town meeting warrant. No, you, you brought my moderator's manual back, but I don't, I don't have my town meeting warrant anymore. Okay, please note, ballot box is empty. Okay? I'm going to put the ballot box right here and I'm going to stand behind it. I am going to explain it. Wait a minute. I told you yes or no once.
Yes, but you have to circle.
Oh. Yeah, you got to circle them. Okay. Now. Who lost their card?
John.
Did we have a voter who came up here to the podium who lost their voter card?
Yes or no?
As we had the instructions, which is the right, which is...
Harvey? 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 Harvey, do you need to say what they need to write, yes or no? Okay, I just, I didn't, didn't know if everybody was going ahead and writing on or anything.
Yeah, we don't understand, you want to understand?
Okay, I'm... Okay, this is not a tear-off ballot. You need to circle either the yes or the no and place the entire ballot in the ballot box here, okay? If you need a pen to do it, there are pens right over here on this table. Huh?
Ask if everybody received today's ballot.
We're all set. Okay. Hang on before I, I had another question here. Folks, if you circle yes and you're voting to amend the... Well, once again, if I still had my town meeting warrant. Somebody that came up here walked out with...
Joe is giving you hers.
No, wait a minute. That's the education, one. That's the education, one.
It's right, turn it, right there. I'll have to do it. The book is accurate. Oh, where'd you find that?
I brought coffee.
Oh, good. Okay, we can get back to this. Now that half of you have already voted. You're voting to amend the shoreline zoning audience, ordinance for Tax Map 13, Lot 50, to change it from limited residential to commercial fisheries and maritime activities. If you vote, if you circle yes. If you circle no, then you're voting not to do that at this time. There. Whoops. Almost took you out, didn't she? Yeah, we got cables everywhere here. Oh, gosh. Yep, there we go. Keep them coming. Thank you. Yeah. Oh, gosh.
I mean, it's going to get screwed with the state anyway. It's just, it's just...
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Joel. Huh? You got a, they gave you one of those because you're a registered voter, right? Okay. Have a seat. Okay, is there anyone present? Is there a, are there any registered voters present, I should say, who have not yet cast a ballot but wish to do so?
Yeah.
If so...
Right.
Come on up. If not, ballot box is closed and I will ask the clerk to please count the ballots and give me your totals.
Do you want to move on to the next question while we do that?
No.
No. Sorry about that. All right. Take one thing up at a time and vote them. That's right.
Well, now you... John walked up, I mean, moderator's manual, but he brought that. No, I got, Stu got me one.
I've got one.
I think, yeah, I think it's in the car though.
I have.
Right, I agree with that. That's why people get on school, that's why you and I all did that same thing, you know? Right.
It's even making me consider that I have a gun, but it was different. I wish the bar was meant to sit so that that would have been...
There's a property in there too. There's a little property.
There's some things considered in the barn.
Yeah, I got you, yeah. It'll be interesting to be anti-vaccinated. I guess they can go remotely and I wonder if, if parents don't want to vaccinate, they probably not going to be in class next year. But the question is, can they be vaccinated? Would they have to do homeschooling?
It's, it's, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah.
I got a feeling that one of these variants is going to, and then one of the boosters in the fall, Moderna, Pfizer, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, it's, this, I'm reading Premonition by Michael Lewis, which is about this and it just came out in May, but he held off on writing it because all the people behind the scenes who were really the outside the box, kind of, they had a nail, they knew this happened and they couldn't get the people to follow. So, include the CDC was...
Oh, I know, they got, they got... It's not, I mean, my friend, yeah, in Ann Arbor, he said, should have had an auto mission lab. And he was saying that normally with the Republican administration, they have kind of four years the same, nothing changes. And that, you know, when it's, when the Democrats come in, a lot of the change is pretty much worked for them. But this time, he said, "Oh, my God, the changes were incredible and way above any thing." And he's worked there now over the years. So, he's gone through a lot of administrations.
Well, there was no transition.
Yeah.
There was no transition.
Right.
Trump didn't go in and look and see how things were run.
No, he just hired people that wanted to change it.
Okay, we have the results of the secret balloting on Article 10. There are 36 votes in favor of the amendment. There are 36 votes opposed to the amendment. And in the event of a tie, the motion fails. That's the, that's the rules. So, Article 10 is defeated. No. They both already counted it? Yeah, and that's why I made them count it twice. Jennifer?
We have a request for...
As the Chair of the Select, would you be willing to take one somewhere along with the ballots and let him count them in your, under your supervision?
I will do that with the clerk.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you aren't going to be able to take notes, but if you guys will go...
I will take notes while the clerk and Chair of the Board of Selectmen...
Okay.
Okay. Why don't you take them down the hall somewhere so we're not disrupting stuff here?
I wasn't too far on.
You're pretty darn close, 37.
Well, there's 72 votes, that means that there were people that didn't vote on some of the other issues.
Yeah, my husband, Kevin, he...
Article 11. Okay, Article 11. To see if the town will vote to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance dated March 17th, 2021, Part 1, Section 5, Subsection 1, Nonconforming Structure. A copy of this amendment, identified as Amendment 1, is on file with the Lemoine Town Clerk's Office and I believe the copies of it are available when you came in. Could I hear a motion supporting Article 11? And second, I've got lots of them here. Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 11? Yes, ma'am?
Do we have a nonconforming structure right now?
The question is, do we have a nonconforming structure right now?
Yeah, well, kind of.
Mr. Hall, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, you can be next to speak.
As you note from the warrant, this is the first in a series of six articles dealing with amendments to two of the town ordinances. Three of them are in the Building and Land Use Ordinance and three are in the Shoreland, excuse me, three are in the Site Plan Review Ordinance. They're minor, their primary purposes are to clarify some meaning, very little substantive change. In addition to maybe copies in the town office or you maybe picked up here, if you have the booklet, you found on pages 76 through 79, if you want to look at all the specific wording of what the original says and what the changes will say. I just want to make a brief statement about the purpose of the changes for each of these six. So, the first one is found in the, regarding nonconforming structures. That means if you have a house that's built 20 feet from the road and doesn't meet the 75-foot setback from the road...
Don't we allow that down?
Hang, hang on, hang on. What you can do with it. So, if you live in a nonconforming structure, what can you do with it? The ordinance, let me just read this statement. "The purpose of the amendment is to provide additional guidance to the owner of a nonconforming structure who wishes to expand or relocate or reconstruct or replace a portion or all of the structure, and additional guidance to the CEO whose job it is to act on these permit applications. The current guidance is limited only to a matter of expansion of nonconforming structure." If you live in a nonconform structure now, the ordinance, all it says is you might be able to expand it by 30% in volume. Doesn't say anything else. The change would be to add some further guidance about where you can relocate it on your, on your parcel, in which direction you can expand it, what if you want to put an addition on, is to provide guidance so that there's no confusion. Kind of follows some of the other ordinances. It's just been an omission over the years and the specific wording is again, is found on pages, whatever, 76 through 79, if you want to follow. We had a public hearing about this several months ago, seemed to be no particular issues. We think it's going to expand the possibilities for people who own property. We think it's going to expand the possibilities for people of home property. If you happen to buy a piece of property that had an existing nonconforming structure, because it was built before the ordinances were, this enables you to know what you can do with it. It expands the possibilities rather than restricts. But I'll be happy to entertain any specific questions if you've looked at it. Right now, we've adding a sec, there's an expect, a section on expansion, a section on relocation, a section on reconstruction or replacement. Basically, you can do what you want to do as long as you don't make it more nonconforming. You can't bring it closer. So that's, that's the purpose, is to clarify. Yes?
So if you have a house here that's closed, it could be tied, add on to nine, that's not wrong?
You could add, you could add on its side, as long as it doesn't bring it any closer, you could add on its sides, you could add on its back, you can go up. You can expand it, you just can't bring it further into noncompliance. If it's twenty feet from the sideline to a neighbor's, you can't bring it to nineteen. You can go backwards or up. Yeah, it's, it's just to provide guidance. Right now, there's no guidance to speak of. Okay. I'll sit down on that one.
Okay.
I'll be getting up five times.
Here. You gave me back my moderating manual, I'll give you back your report. Town report. Okay, on Article eleven, other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, sir?
Just for clarification on, on that, under C, we were talking about replacement. If there's a, a property, if there's a structure that is currently nonconforming and it needs to be replaced, can it be replaced on where that currently is as long as it doesn't become nonconforming? Maybe this is where it sounds like it can't be put on where that structure was if the structure is currently not.
No, it can be, it can be replaced, it can be reconstructed on this location. Just can't.
Can it have, it is currently not?
Yes, just can't make it more.
The other questions, comments, or discussion on Article eleven? Hearing none, you're voting to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Part One, Section Five, Subsection One, Nonconforming Structure. That's Amendment One on what's on file in the Town Clerk's Office. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down, those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article eleven is passed. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Part Two, Subsection Twelve, or Section Twelve, Subsection G, setbacks, side and rear yard widths and buffers. A copy of this amendment is identified as Amendment Two is on file with the LeMoyne Town Clerk's Office. Could I hear a motion supporting Article twelve? It's moved and then seconded, thank you, folks. Been moved and seconded, questions, comments, or discussion on Article twelve? Hearing none. You're voting to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Part Two, Section Twelve, Subsection G. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down, those opposed, hold yours up. Put those down. Article twelve is passed. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Part Three, Section Seventeen, Subsection B, Definitions. A copy of this amendment identified as Amendment Three is on file with the LeMoyne Town Clerk's Office. Could I hear a motion supporting Article thirteen? Got a motion and a second, thank you, folks. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article thirteen? Yes?
Yeah, a couple of questions for the planning board. Is this proposed change for height of structure only for the Building and Land Use Ordinance?
Come on up, John.
This change in definition right now is for the Building and Land Use Ordinance. There's another one for the Site Plan Review Ordinance coming up in a few minutes.
Why not for the Shoreland zoning ordinance?
Shoreland Zordon Ordinance is determined, defined by the state. That's the state definition, we can't tamper with it.
Well, usually the goal of zoning ordinance is to simplify or modify the ordinance so that they are. So we're wanting two different definitions, or two different ordinances which definitely say the same thing? Is that what's happening here?
We're having the, our goal is to have the Building and Land Use Ordinance and the Site Plan Review Ordinance say the same thing. And the Shoreland Ordinance says something a little different, it's much more restrictive. We didn't want that restriction, that much more restrictive definition in most of LeMoyne.
How is it more restricted for both thirty-five feet, average height, original grade?
Oh, they are.
So in developing the, the change, did you reach out to any other communities to see if they're having difficulty with the definition within the Shoreland zoning interpretation?
We didn't consult other people about what the, other towns about what the state said in their definition. The state definition measures the building height to the original ground before.
Okay, did you run this definition by the town's attorney?
No.
Did you run it by the Legal Department of Maine Medical Association?
Like the COVID question, I'll say no to all the questions. We didn't consult anybody.
So essentially, our original definition is exactly as it is in the Shoreland zoning ordinance. In the state of Maine, there's more than four hundred and fifty communities that have state mandated Shoreland zoning ordinance. Not one of them has had any difficulty with the interpretation of a height of structure. So to say that there's five planning board members, five Board of Appeals, of which our Board of Appeals upheld the definition twice, in total, of course, and obviously, there's literally thousands of people in the state of Maine that have had not had any difficulty interpreting the the definition of height of structure. Why is it that LeMoyne is so unique?
Feel free to vote no, Terry.
So you choose not to answer this question?
Why is LeMoyne so, this is what the planning board is recommending. Do you want to argue about whether we're unique or not? It's a yes or no. If you don't like it, you can vote no.
John?
Yeah.
Is that yours? Yes. People keep either leaving stuff on the, my podium here or taking stuff from it. I'm getting confused. Okay, is there further discussion or questions on Article thirteen? Hearing none, you're voting to amend the Building and Land Use Ordinance of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Part Three, Section Seventeen, Subsection B, Definitions. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down, those opposed, please hold your cards up.
Yeah, we're gonna have to count that.
Okay, let's start over again. Those in favor, please hold your cards up and hold them up while they get counted. I'll give you the rest of it back now, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, put, everybody's got their cards down?
Thirteen on this side.
How many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Okay, now those opposed, please hold your cards up and keep them up while they get counted.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
One six.
One six.
Okay, the result of the voting is thirty-one yes and twenty-three no. Article thirteen is passed. And I've got to click my pen so I can mark that. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance dated March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section J, General Review Standards, Subsection One, Preserve and Enhance the Landscape. A copy of the proposed amendment identified as Amendment One is on file with the LeMoyne Town Clerk's Office. Could I hear a motion supporting Article fourteen? And second, I've got it, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article fourteen? Yes, sir? What is it addressing? John, you want to answer that? Don't forget to take your stuff with you.
Sorry. Yes. The, the purpose, the purpose of this amendment is to clarify the meaning of this section, the interpretation of which has been confusing often to the applicants, to the planning board, and to the appeals board. And the amendment proposes to do this not by changing any of the language in this two-paragraph section, but by noting designated one of the paragraphs as Paragraph A, and the other as Paragraph B, signifying that these are two distinct review criteria, each with different, though related, concern about the landscape. One review criteria deals with the larger question of whether or not a project is suitable to be located on the proposed site. And the, that's the larger question, such as, do we put a sardine factory next to the school? Or not? It's not an appropriate site, or if it's a five-hundred-acre parcel, which part of the parcel maybe is more appropriate to be put on? And the other paragraph deals with undertaking a project in an appropriate manner with respect to the landscape, like how are things restored once the project, building is built, how its landscape, the roads, and all that sort of thing. No words are being replaced in this section. The subsection is simply restructured in order to clarify its intent.
Yes, ma'am?
How is unique, unique natural features?
You get, you heard it, John?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I don't think there is a strict definition of what a unique natural feature is. But it's a feature, let's say it's a, I don't know what, a, a unique kind of vernal pool, perhaps? Maybe it's not the only one, but it's, it's a profound one, or a certain glacial deposit, or something. Something that's fairly unusual and worth preserving. Shell heaps, something?
Other questions, comments, or discussion on Article fourteen? Hearing none. You are voting to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance of March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section J, General Review Standards, Subsection One, Preserve and Enhance the Landscape. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. Okay, I don't think we need to count that. Okay, put those down. Article fourteen is passed. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance dated March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section M, Appeals. A copy of the proposed amendment is identified as Amendment Two and is on file with the LeMoyne Town Clerk's Office. Could I hear a motion supporting Article fifteen? And a second, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article fifteen? Hearing none, you are voting to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance of March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section M, Appeals. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down. Those opposed, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Article fifteen is passed. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance dated March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section P, Construction of Language. A copy of the proposed amendment identified as Amendment Three is on file with the LeMoyne Town Clerk's Office. Could I hear a motion supporting Article sixteen? And a second, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article sixteen? Yes, ma'am? Does that have anything to do with that house, John, whatever?
It, it has to do in a related way, because there was some confusion in interpreting the definition in the various definitions in the Shoreland, or the Building and Land Use Ordinance as to what the def, what the meaning of building height was. It was poorly constructed grammatically, and it did lend itself to two interpretations. We're trying to get rid of any, any, any way that which is not crystal clear at this point. We just wanted to, because it went through an enormous amount of issues, legal issues, and appeals board and planning board, and it was simply an effort to, to clarify it, so this thing doesn't happen again. It's been in the ordinance for years and never posed a problem, and ended up, you know, you find the weaknesses in your ordinance when something comes up that doesn't quite fit in, and then you have these. Anyway, the answer, short answer is yes, but it's not trying to, it's just trying to clarify the definition of when you measure what a building height is. I, I'm not pleased to comment, I think it's all through the legal process, but I'm not the person to answer that. The planning board wasn't involved in that. Wasn't issued with that.
Okay, other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just to come develop the difference between the script language of ground, the joint, uh, average grade of original ground, adjoining building, is pre-pressed or replaced with adjacent to the foundation. What's the fundamental difference between those two?
Could you restate the question?
Yeah. I, I, I need to ask you if you would, for a minute, stand up, take your mask down, and ask that question again.
Okay, sure. In the, in the script language, or the proposed script language, that the average grade of original ground that joining the building is replaced with the grade of the ground that adjacent to the foundation. What's the difference in those two?
John? Go ahead.
I think adjacent to the foundation was to indicate more precisely what it meant to be a budding, uh, what's the other term? Yeah, page seventy-nine, right. Adjoining and adjacent, I wanted to be, be clear, we, it just means you measure where the ground meets the foundation.
And that's the only point from there you're determining the.
That's, that's, yeah, there are some definitions in, in MUBEC, for example, that talks about six feet away from the foundation is the point which you use. Because then you got to deal with, there's lots of backfill, I mean, it's some, it's to some degree in arbitrary, but I want to make sure it's, it's clear, that's what. If you're going to take a measurement, this is what the definition, doesn't say how, this does not say how high a building can or cannot be. It's only, if you measure it, these are the top and this is the bottom, that's the number. The town can have a building be eighty feet high if it wants to change the ordinance in other places, but not, not a definition.
That won't change a bit. Okay. Alrighty. Any further comments or questions on Article sixteen? Hearing none, you're voting to amend the LeMoyne Site Plan Review Ordinance of March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Section P, Construction of Language. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down, those opposed, hold yours up. Okay, put those down, Article sixteen is passed. Article seventeen. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for administration and to set the salaries of the following elected officers, excuse me, who will be paid from the administration account of the general fund and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to establish the rate of compensation for appointed officials. And the positions we're referring to are Selectman Chair, sixteen hundred dollars. Selectman Non-Chair, those four positions, one thousand dollars. The Chair of the Assessors, sixteen hundred dollars. And the two Non-Chair positions, fifteen hundred dollars. Your Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend. Your budget committee and selectmen recommend two hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, and the salaries as outlined above. Could I hear a motion supporting article seventeen with the recommendations? I've got several, and I bet one of you'd be willing to second it if we really needed it.
Mr. Chair, there's actually a different recommendation subsequent to the printing of the warrant. It's not in your warrant, but the recommendation has changed.
Do we make a motion to go by the figure that's on the screen?
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with using... This is just a recommendation. And the...
The amount is two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and eighteen cents is the new recommendation.
Everybody okay with that change, using that recommendation? I'm going to change what I got here. Two, five, four, five, four, five, eighteen. Okay. So, do I have a motion supporting article seventeen with the recommended amount up on the board? Could do. Second, got it? Okay, now we'll do this. Questions, comments, or discussion on article seventeen? Sir?
Are these increases, how do they compare to what's current?
You mean as far as the salaries?
I believe they're the same as they have been, from what I remember.
I didn't quite understand what the question was.
What was the increase, is there any increase in the salaries?
Of the selectmen and the assessors?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Other questions? They want to know where the increases from...
The increase from the original recommended amount in your town report as opposed to what's on the screen? I can't explain that. The selectmen in a week moment decided to sign me to a new contract, and the proposal from the selectmen was higher than what was budgeted. So it's my salary.
Other questions, comments, or discussion on article seventeen? Yes?
I don't understand the arithmetic.
Can't hear you, Carol. Can't hear you, Carol.
I don't understand the arithmetic, how it comes up to almost two hundred fifty thousand when I multiply a thousand by four.
You could see it in the...
Is that monthly?
It's in the book.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The budget is in the town report. This is not just the salaries of the selectmen and the assessors. You're setting those salaries. There's a three-page budget for the administration budget. There's, you know, the salaries of all, myself and Jennifer and everybody else that gets paid, and electricity, et cetera. So on pages fifty-nine through sixty-one of your town report, the administration budget is there.
Okay, that helps. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on article seventeen? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate for administration the amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and eighteen cents, and to establish the salaries listed in the article. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put them down. Those opposed, hold yours up. Put those down. Article seventeen is passed. To see what sum the town of Lemoine will vote to raise and appropriate for the support of social service organizations listed below, which made written requests for funding from the selectmen and met the criteria of the town meeting donation requests ordinance adopted November seventh, two thousand, as amended. Okay, I'm going to read these down through. I have to do that. American Red Cross requested six hundred, recommended six hundred. Community Health and Counseling Service requested four hundred, recommended four hundred. Health Equity Allowance requested seven hundred, recommended seven hundred. Down East Horizons requested seven hundred, recommended seven hundred. Eastern Area Agency on Aging requested seven hundred, recommended seven hundred. Families First Community Center requested seven hundred, recommended the same amount. Friends in Action Community Connection requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Grand Auditorium requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Lemoine Historical Society requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Lifeflight Foundation requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Down East Community Partners, seven hundred, requested, recommended the same. Women, Infants, and Children's Clinic requested seven hundred, recommended the same. Yesterday's Children requested three hundred and recommended the same. Those total nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Your budget and committee selectmen recommend nine thousand, seven hundred dollars as outlined above. The donation request ordinance requires the Board of Selectmen to recommend no more than five percent of one mil, which is thirteen thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Could I hear a motion supporting article eighteen with the recommended amount? Got it? And a second, thank you. Okay, questions or comments to discussion on article eighteen? Hearing none. I'll bet you prefer I wouldn't read all those over again, won't you? I won't, okay. All I'm going to do is indicate the total amount you're raising, nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for the listed agencies at their recommended amounts. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. My mask is slipping. So I'll push it up under my glasses so they'll fog up, and I won't see any of you. Okay, the opposed have put theirs down, and we're all set. Eighteen is passed. I did have your vote, didn't I? Yeah. Okay, I thought I did. Eight, nineteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for library services. The selectmen and budget committee recommend eight thousand, ten dollars. The Elthoff Public Library has requested funding of eight thousand, ten dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article nineteen with the appropriate amount? Yes, yes, okay. Motion's in seconds all over the hall. Questions, comments, or discussion on nineteen? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand, ten dollars for library services. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Nineteen is passed. Twenty, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety expenditures. The budget committee, selectmen, and fire department recommend ninety-four thousand, four hundred, seventy-five dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty with the recommended amount? Got it? Seconds, right, we're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty? Yes, ma'am?
Is there a fire department, is it working around, something?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, what page did that be on?
That would be on pages sixty-three and sixty-four. In addition to the fire department, it includes animal control and the ambulance contract.
Okay, other questions or comments on article twenty? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred, seventy-five dollars for public safety expenditures. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article twenty is passed. Article twenty-one, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for waste disposal, including operation of the Lemoine Transfer Station, shipment to the Penobscot Energy Recovery Company, recycling contractor, monitoring of wells around the former landfill, and authorize the selectmen to continue the contract of disposal of septic sludge. The selectmen and budget committee recommend one hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty-one with the recommended amount? Got one back there, got a second right there, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-one? Yes?
Is there public information of just what the transfer attendant is supposed to be?
Didn't hear it.
I think the question was, is there a job description for the transfer station attendant? Yeah?
And the public state?
If the public asks, sure. I think it may be online, but...
Okay, yes, ma'am?
The last time I was in a meeting...
I can't understand you.
The last time we were in meetings, we were talking about doing the automatic, automatic compaction. Talk about this, every guy...
The, I don't understand what you mean by automatic, Evelyn.
Well, instead of putting it on things, going to get...
Oh, you were, okay, compaction, compacted. Yeah, we talked about that. We, the selectmen hired an engineering firm to do a preliminary design, and it was only about a half million dollars to accomplish that.
Ooh.
We opted for one more dumpster at this point.
(laughing).
That's about two hundred and sixty dollars a month, slightly less expensive.
Okay, other questions on article twenty-one, folks? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate one hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for waste disposal, including the transfer station, shipment to perk, recycling contractor, well monitoring, and continuing the contract of disposal of septic sludge. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article twenty-one is passed. Article twenty-two, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for code enforcement, including operations of the planning and appeals boards, and authorize expenditure of the state share of local plumbing fees to the main Department of Human Services. The selectmen and budget committee recommend thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article two with the recommended amount? Got it there in a second, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-two? Yes?
My feeling is that even though this isn't the appropriate place to propose it, I think that it needs to be a higher amount in order to give the CEO more than one and a half days. It just, I might go on record as saying that, and in the coming year, I'll be sure I go to the budget committee and bring that up. But the mind is getting a reputation that it is far easier to get forgiveness for violating something in the ordinance than it is permission to do something, and I think it's about to change.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, or discussion on article twenty-two? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars for code enforcement, including the planning and appeals boards, and expending the state share of local plumbing fees to the main Department of Human Services. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article twenty-two is passed. Time out for a second. My throat is getting dry. My sinuses are. Trying to make up for that. Article twenty-three, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for road maintenance. The budget committee and selectmen recommend the amount of two hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty-three with the recommended amount? Yes, and seconds? Couple of them there, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-three? Okay, hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of two hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars for road maintenance. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. Put those down. Article twenty-three is passed. Article twenty-four, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for major road projects, including repavement of a section of Buttermilk Road. The budget committee and selectmen recommend one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty-four with the recommended amount? Yes, got it, and a second, thanks. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-four? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for major road projects, including repavement of a section of Buttermilk Road. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Okay, article twenty-four is passed. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for parks, recreation, and cemetery maintenance. The Parks Commission, Recreation Committee, Selectmen, and Budget Committee recommend twenty-five thousand, ninety dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty-five with the recommended amount? Thank you, and a second. Got it? Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-five? Yes?
On the cemetery lot, don't people pay their own money? Get along, they are already plenty for that.
You want to address that, Stu?
I can address that, Mr. Moderator. The cemetery maintenance is a state law that we maintain veterans' graves, and so we contract with the two larger cemeteries, Forest Hill and East Lemoine, for thirty dollars per lot. They perform the maintenance, and that guarantees us the maintenance of those. Additionally, flags are placed at veterans' graves as required by state law every May. I put those out last week, and that part of the budget is covered.
Other questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-five? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of twenty-five thousand, ninety dollars for parks, recreation, and cemetery maintenance. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put those down. Those opposed, please hold your cards up. Put those down. Article twenty-five is passed.
And, Mr. Moderator, let me add that Mrs. Markun helped put the flags out last week, too.
All right. Article twenty-six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for enforcement of the Frenchman's Bay Regional Shell Fishing Ordinance. The budget committee and selectmen recommend three thousand dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting article twenty-six with the recommended amount? And seconds? Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on article twenty-six? Yes, Evelyn?
Do you still have places that are closed off? I don't think so.
I think Kathleen...
Mr. Moderator? I'm on the municipal joint board for the Shellfish or Commission. Yes, we have conservation closures. In fact, we've closed Berry Cove now for two years because the clams, when it opened up earlier this year, they just weren't there, and they weren't growing large. There was a lot of very small clams. So, yes, parts of Marlborough will be closed, and that's all decided at our regional meetings, which are open to the public if you want to participate. And conservation closures is done for the health of the clams. It's been working.
And occasionally, what DMR does, the closures for the health of the rest of us humans, right?
Those are different kinds of closures. Those are toxin closures.
Right.
We're talking about closed to commercial clambers and recreational clambers, so the clams have a chance to grow.
Do we have some, um, working there?
We do. We hired, we have Mike Hall, who's now working forty hours under contract with the wardens. But the actual, the clambers have been very good about working together, and they know who has a license and who doesn't, so we've actually had some really good success. It's now been eleven years that we've been running this program, so it's been working.
Other questions or comments on article twenty-six? Hearing none. You are voting to raise and appropriate the amount of three thousand dollars for enforcement of the Frenchman's Bay Regional Shell Fishing Ordinance. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down. Those opposed, please hold yours up. Put those down. Article twenty-six is passed. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, okay. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate, this is article twenty-seven, by the way, for capital projects and debt service payments. The selectmen and budget committee recommend a total of one hundred forty-three thousand dollars for the following projects. Land Conservation Fund, Lemoine Susquehannetional Celebration, I'm sorry, the conservation fund was a thousand dollars, celebration was twenty-five hundred. Fire Department SCBA Cylinder Replacement, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars... Department SCBA cylinder replacement, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, broadband expansion, five thousand dollars, community center planning, ten thousand dollars, revaluation, one-hundred ten thousand dollars. Could I hear a motion supporting Article twenty-seven with the recommended amount? Got it, and some seconds there, thank you. I'll let you guys down front, be the movers on one of these here pretty quick. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article twenty-seven?
I have one.
Okay, Joe, you're first.
To save the date for August fourteenth, when we're going to have our parade and fireworks.
If you use a microphone...
August fourteenth, August fourteenth, parade and fireworks. Save the date. Yes, now. Other questions or comments on Article twenty-seven? Yes?
There was a, a...
Those are the breathing apparatus, with the, the air packs.
Did you replace all of them, one of them?
How many are you replacing, chief?
We replaced, uh, we replaced, uh, we replaced fifteen of, like, units, and we have dangerously shot, um, twenty-six, five, eleven, um, one, it's probably lower than the others. So, we kind of have to, uh, in that sense, quite a lot, quite a bit of time, and we have, uh, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, wow.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments, or discussion on Article twenty-seven? Yes?
Well, yeah, I'm asking for more money. The land conservation fund has been a thousand dollars for well over ten years, and the cost of land has certainly grown up. I would love to add another two thousand to that, so the total on this would be one, uh, one-hundred forty-five thousand, but I don't want to open any up, because I know an amendment would take a lot of time, but I guess, is it up to a citizen to go to the Budget Committee, or would this be the Conservation Commission, or what? A thousand dollars is not nearly enough.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The recommendation for the thousand dollars came from the Conservation Commission, I would suggest you start with them.
That'll, that'll work. Okay, other questions, comments, or discussion on Article twenty-seven? Hearing none, you are voting to raise and appropriate the total amount of one-hundred forty-three thousand dollars for those six projects, thank you, for, uh, capital projects and debt service payments. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Put them down, those opposed, please hold your cards up. Put those down, Article twenty-seven is passed.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
May I, in addressing the last comment that Carol, you made in reference to the Conservation Committee, the, these amounts of money that are put aside to conservation lands, we have looked at, ten thousand of the dollars that we had accumulated at one point, went into the co-partnership with Frenchman's Bay Conservancy for the Marlboro Beach, of which I think the total, I think we, actually, I don't, what was that, third, how much did we spend on that part?
On Marlboro Beach?
Yeah.
The land purchase, the town put in ten thousand, Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, I think, put in ten thousand.
Okay, so, we had a mutual fundraising thing, so that there was, they came up with, I think, thirty thousand, Terry?
The total cost was forty-five thousand.
Okay, so, there was town money that was available to offset the cost, but there still was a fundraising effort by the Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, but it makes sense that what you're saying, I just wanted to say that we have an example of where we partnered with other people, so the town doesn't pay for the whole thing, but it does contribute something, so, anyway.
Okay, now, Article twenty-eight, to see which revenues the town will vote to appropriate for inclusion in the non-education portion of the budget to offset local property taxes. And here we go. Interest on real estate taxes, twelve thousand dollars, automobile excise taxes, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, watercraft excise taxes, three thousand dollars, administration fees, two hundred fifty dollars, tax lien charges, four thousand dollars, agent fees, six thousand dollars, general assistance reimbursement, one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, interest on investments, twenty, twenty thousand dollars, there we go, rental incomes from the cell phone tower, fifteen thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, undesignated fund balance, also known as surplus, one hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars, for a total for the general fund of six hundred two thousand three hundred seventy dollars. The road fund, the U-RIP program, twenty thousand dollars, and that's, total's twenty. Code enforcement, code enforcement fees, ten thousand, transfer from code enforcement fund, five thousand, plumbing permit fees, four thousand, for a grand total layer of nineteen thousand dollars. Recreation fund, recreation fund use, three thousand two hundred dollars, recreation fees, two thousand eight hundred dollars, for a total layer of six thousand dollars. Other funds, Hodgkins Trust Fund, ten thousand, Woodcombe Woods Fund, one thousand five hundred dollars, Parks Fund, one thousand, local animal control fees, one thousand five hundred, revaluation fund, one hundred ten thousand dollars, cable TV fund, five thousand dollars, total offsets to the local property tax, seven hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred seventy dollars.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
May I offer a motion to pass Article twenty-eight with a slightly different recommendation, in that the undesignated fund balance would now be one-hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, for a total of seven hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, give me that new figure again.
Undesignated fund balance, one-six-nine-nine-eight-eight-point-two-five.
Yep.
For a total of seven-eight-one-seven-five-two-point-five-zero. If somebody seconded that, I can explain.
Somebody want to second that? There we go, I got several. A lot of people thought that was a good idea.
Oh, good. And, and the reasoning for that is the change that we made in the administration budget several articles ago, this is an increased use of surplus, undesignated fund balance to offset that increase, so it's not coming from property taxes.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second to that motion?
Oh, they already did.
Oh, got it, okay. It's getting late.
I know.
Questions, comments, or discussion on Article twenty-eight? Okay, you're voting that the revenues that we listed here are to be included in the non-education portion of the budget to offset local property taxes. Those in favor, hold up your cards. Put them down, those opposed, please hold yours up. Nobody there, Article twenty-eight is passed. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to continue and establish the following funds: the fund balance account, code enforcement fund, fire truck reserve fund, road assistance fund, education capital fund, animal control fund, revaluation reserve fund, insurance deductibles fund, harbor fund, cable TV channel fund, parks fund, capital improvements fund, land conservation fund, veterans memorial fund, Conservation Commission fund, flag display maintenance fund, Allen and Lurine Hodgkins Fund, recreation fund, town hall renovation fund, heating assistance fund, Susquehannet annual celebration fund, transfer station capital fund, education fund from operations, education special, education special ed reserve, education secondary tuition reserve, education facilities maintenance reserve, cemetery care fund, and Woodcombe Woods Maintenance Fund, that's a new fund. And, as a note here, most funds are part of continuing operations, so the balance as of six-thirty-twenty, which would be what's in your town report, does not reflect any appropriations, expenditures, or revenues for the current fiscal year. At the time the warrant was signed, the audited balance, balances as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, were not yet available. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend continuing and establishing the above funds. Could I hear a motion supporting Article twenty-nine, to continue and establish that list of funds? Second, and first, okay. Any questions on twenty-nine? Yes, sir?
The audit's done yet.
Mr. Moderator? Yes?
Yes, okay.
It was done well ahead of the original town meeting date as required by law, and I have put the fund balances on the screen.
Ha-ha.
The audit's available?
You can see it right on the town's website, if you'd like, sir.
Okay.
Says the former auditor.
Now, we, we didn't vote on that, did we?
Not yet.
It's time. All right, so we're voting to continue and create that one new fund. Those in favor, please hold up your cards. Okay, put those down, those opposed, please hold your cards up. Don't see any. Article twenty-nine is passed. I forgot to put my check mark on this page. Article thirty, to see if the town will authorize expenditures of funds from the harbor fund for improvements at the harbor area as suggested to and approved by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the Selectmen to set the compensation of the harbor master and deputy harbor master to be paid from the harbor fund, expenditures are not to exceed available amounts in said fund. Could I hear a motion supporting Article thirty? Got it? Second, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article thirty as presented? Hearing none, those in favor of Article thirty, please hold up your cards. Put those down, those opposed, please hold yours up. Don't see any. Article thirty is passed. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will authorize expenditure of funds from the cable TV fund for operation of LeMoyne's cable TV channel as suggested to and approved by the Board of Selectmen, and authorize the Selectmen to set the compensation of the cable TV operations manager. Expenditures are to be deducted from and revenues are to be added to the cable TV fund. Expenditure amounts are not to exceed available amounts in said fund. Motion supporting Article thirty-one? Got one? Second, we're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on thirty-one? Hearing none, those in favor of Article thirty-one as presented, hold up your cards. Okay, put them down, those opposed, hold your cards up. Article thirty-one is passed. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will authorize expenditure of funds from the veterans' memorial fund as recommended to and approved by the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of maintaining the memorial, not to exceed the available amount of the fund. Motion supporting Article thirty-two? Got it? Second, we're good. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article thirty-two? Okay, you're voting to authorize the expenditures outlined in Article thirty-two, those in favor, please hold up your cards, put them down, those opposed, now can put theirs up. Okay, Article thirty-two is passed.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Might I ask, Gary, we have some plans for Monday at the, the memorial?
Yes, uh, Monday at ten a.m., there is going to be a Memorial Day service, and we are going to have main state, Senator Louis Lucchini is going to be the speaker, and all are invited, and I encourage that you please come.
In the event of rain?
In an intent, in the event of rain, we will hold it inside the town hall, we've had to do that a couple times over the last twelve years, but hopefully no rain.
Moderator, can I, I have one more announcement? And at three p.m., there'll be a trumpeter, all around the United States, trumpets will play taps, taps on Memorial Day, and LeMoyne will be participating with Bill Whiteney, a trumpeter, so please come in your cars to listen to that.
Where will be?
At the Veterans Memorial, on Town Hall.
Okay. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will authorize expenditure of funds in the Conservation Commission Fund as recommended to and approved by the Chair of the Conservation Commission for commissioned projects and said funds not to exceed the available amount of the fund. Could I hear a motion supporting Article thirty-three? Got one, and seconds, all over. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article thirty-three? Hearing none, you're voting to authorize those expenditures stated in Article thirty-three, those in favor, hold up your cards. Put them down, those opposed, please hold yours up. None of those, Article thirty-three is passed. Guess what? There is nothing else that we can do on this warrant. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to thank you very much, and I don't know about your evaluation of your last town meeting, but I think we made it very interesting.
Actually, I think it was fine. It was a lot better than my first one, I can tell you that.
Thank you very much.
I was very nervous, that first one. Thanks, guys. Meeting is adjourned. God bless you all, take care.
You're welcome, Mark, enjoyed it. It, yeah, you know, the, the people in this town, I have yet to see anything that, if it was for the benefit of the people in the town, that they wouldn't come up with, I mean, you know, I, in a way, I felt bad for Glenn, but at the same time, two, three people that spoke were absolutely right. He didn't have any plan yet, and, and, and what he wants to do, he wants that approval to change it, so that he can plan anything he wants, and that's not right. Voted in. Oh, well, I am going home, see if my wife is still up, still talking to me. I was out last night over in Muckport doing the R-A-D Budget Meeting.